Welcome everyone to the Ponty Business Council Special Meeting. It is 5:35. I'll call this meeting to a halt. First off, I'd like to call upon Sammy. Could you read your presentation?
Sure. Heavenly Father God, we come to you this evening thanking you for our beautiful day, Heavenly Father. Ask that you bless our Ponty Nation here, Heavenly Father, and our council members. Make good decisions, Heavenly Father. Be with the mourners today, those who are without God, all of our children, Heavenly Father. Touch their hearts, Heavenly Father. Keep them safe and educated. Give you the praise and glory and leading the lotus of this evening in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Back to call upon Secretary Wilson to call a roll.
Bruce Pratt?
Excuse me.
Darryl Walcott?
Here.
Amy Littleson? Here. Angela Thompson?
Here.
Sammy Addison?
Here.
Donna Hare?
Here.
Adrian Spottor-Horshey?
Here.
Leanna Teager?
Here.
Do we have a core present? Move on to approval of the agenda.
Right President Walcott, I have some additions on Budget Committee. And those are, so they'll go under fifteen and this question will be fifty A. My computer's still completely out of trouble. It's not working. It would be, Harrison, did you send me Budget Mod number eleven or Ponty Business Council?
Yes.
You did?
I sent the version.
You sent two Budget Mods? The two we talked about?
Yes.
Okay. I need to add Ponty Business Council Budget Mod number eleven as A. And then Tax Commission Tribal Budget Mod number, what's that, Mod number two? Mod number two. And then Item C is going to be the gift cards for the elders for Thanksgiving turkey. And that's it.
Can I ask for a motion? Motion? Motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And the second, Angela Thompson making the motion. The next, to have approval of the BBC minutes of October twenty.
We've got a problem with the agenda.
Oh, we're too fancy.
That's okay. That's okay.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. Call for a vote on the approval of the agenda.
Amy Littleson? Yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottor-Horshey?
Yes.
Leanna Teager?
Yes.
Approval was passed. Now move on to Item Four, approval of minutes of BBC meeting, October twenty, twenty sixteen. Is there anything to be changed on October twenty?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October ten. Oh, I'm sorry, October twenty. Twenty sixteen.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Marfany and the seconded by Leanna Teager. Call for a vote.
Amy Littleson? Yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottor-Horshey?
Yes.
Leanna Teager?
Yes.
Minutes of October twenty, twenty sixteen have been approved. I need to approve of the minutes of quarterly meeting of November fifth, twenty sixteen.
This is for you to be the, yeah, I need the vote on coming out of the executive session. And I need to wait the motion and to come out of the executive session. I'm not going to go.
To come out of the executive?
Yeah.
Sorry? Family, yeah. Just quick on?
Yeah. Sammy, Leanna.
Yes. So that would be with the changes?
Right.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the quarterly meeting with changes. So, I'm trying to change the secretary of session. Do you have a motion?
I suppose, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes for the quarterly meeting with the changes that were discussed.
Motion's been made, but you're second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Call for a vote.
Amy Littleson? Yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottor-Horshey?
Yes.
Leanna Teager?
Yes.
Okay, the quarterly meeting of November fifth has been approved. There would be no Ponty Business Council President at this time. We'll be on to council's committee on travel reports. Leanna, where?
Since our last meeting, we've had an enrollment committee and all of the actions that we took or recommendations that we took in the enrollment meeting are on the agenda tonight and we have our management here. That's the only committee meeting that I've had.
Okay, fine. Jan?
I don't believe about that any and I don't have a request and I was reporting on my last trip at the next week. I just got back, so I'm.
Okay, right.
Okay, last week I attended the tribal interior budget council meeting. We discussed the budget subcommittee, the road subcommittee, the data management subcommittee, public safety and justice subcommittee. And during tribal caucus mainly the discussion was on some issues and mostly related to the election and the new administration. I also, while I was out there, I forwarded you all the hundred day action plan that Trump issued and that came out probably later that afternoon. So you should have that as well as land buyback. I forwarded that information on. They talked about the tribal court information and funding that's available, which I forwarded on to Susie Canipoe as well to see if we could apply for that funding. Let's see, OMB, the discussion on the Office of Management and Budget from this interior budget council was that we need to have a liaison or tribal representative within the Department of OMB to forward any, to handle any Indian country issues. We need to have a representative in that, in that office, Office of Management and Budget to help us be proactive and advocate for our, for Indian country basically. And so they had a lot of report outs in regard to the subcommittees and updates and future priorities going into where we're at for 2017 and start planning for 2018 priorities as So that's kind of it in a nutshell in regard to, in regard to tribal interior budget council. And I forwarded all that information to you, so if you all have any questions, let me know. I did, also as a part of my trip, I went and spoke to the Department of Education in regard to Ponty Nation College and met with Ms. Washington and met with her supervisor or the director, the branch division director, Robert Ouz for us. And spoke to them and basically they prefaced the conversation with that, you know, we're here to listen, but we can't give you any information because we're not considered the grantee. I understand that, but I wanted to inform you of our concerns as, as a Ponty Business Council and actually kind of go over our infrastructure, that we are the supreme governing body that created the college and so that we do have general oversight and review of all policies and procedures that they create, we have to approve. And that we also appoint the board members. That's our duties as a government creating that body. And explain the issues and concerns about infrastructure for them to have their own IT, their own HR, and their own finance division and that we want to work in coordination with the college together as a team to, to develop this strategic plan or transition plan so it transitions smoothly and that we are only concerned with them having the capability to operate those funds in an appropriate and strategic manner in regard to having the, those infrastructures in place in order to operate optimally and maximize those dollars. And that our concerns were that the third-party funds have not been audited and the concerns that were brought forward to us by faculty, students, and the concern, you know, all the things that we had discussed prior to, prior to going. And so they had, I felt like they had, they were very receptive. They had a better understanding of the infrastructure in regard to the Ponty Nation, Ponty Nation and the Ponty Business Council creating an entity who's under Articles and Incorporated, who have an Articles of incorporation. And I state that when we create entities that we delegate certain authorities under those Articles for them to operate, but we still have the oversight and the review of any policies and procedures that they approve. And they had, they did ask, you know, what was the, what timeframe are we looking at for them to establish that? And I said, well, I, at this point, I can't answer whether it's going to take six months or a year or two years. I said, because the concern that we have is that they do not have the operating revenue to support those three branches or three departments of infrastructure. And until they can have enough revenue coming in to establish that, then that concern is still going to be there. But I also informed them that, you know, we don't want to do anything as a council to jeopardize those dollars. So the, the purpose and goal of that meeting was to see if we can, if we can, if we're able to, as a council, to work with the college, the Board of Trustees, to develop this plan and, and in the meantime, they have in conjunction together with the Board of Trustees to transfer those dollars back underneath the tribe. Until they have that infrastructure in place, would they be okay with that? Well, they said that they couldn't answer that question. It would have to go to the branches. The whole branch would have to make that decision, just not those two individuals there. And so they wanted copies of our constitution and a copy of the Articles of incorporation so that they could hand it over to their Office of General Counsel to review so that they have a better understanding of the makeup of the, the oversight of the college. And so I said I would forward those to them. And they also wanted a specific letter from the government stating what our request is. And, and what I mean by request is to see if they would be willing to approve us being, transferring the discipline agent responsibilities back to the tribe without jeopardizing the funding. That was the ultimate goal. And like I said, there was no, I couldn't get a confirmation. I said, I want, I wanted to walk out of there with that confirmation to come back so that we could schedule a meeting with the board and, and work through this so that we can ensure that they have the capability to operate those programs. And I also informed them that, you know, where we stand right now, we're kind of between a catch-22. I did tell them that we believe in the college and we've seen the outcomes and the rewards of the, of the benefits of the college to our people through education, people obtaining their degrees, associate and bachelor's degrees. And we believe in the college. We want them to succeed. We want them to be successful. But in a sense, you know, until those things are in place, we have these concerns, which are major and valid concerns. And so with that, the meeting's basically concluded and like I said, we need to follow up and send those, the information. We had a Budget Committee meeting today. We had a discussion and we know the constitution's on the, on the website. I think Andrew had some heartburn with releasing the Articles and I agree with him about having federal OGC attorney spreading through our governing documents. And I did, you know, I did preface the meeting with that, you know, I don't like going to the federal agency and airing all of our governing laundry, you know what I mean? But it was to that point and I'm here to try to devise a plan and work together because we all want, we all have the same goal. We all have the same goal. We all want them to succeed, but how can we do that?
What's our funding program? How much annual is given to them?
About a hundred. The 2017 budget, I believe, was approved at about a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. And that's just salaries and fringe benefits for the president of the college. So basically.
That's just that, that doesn't include the grant?
Yeah, that's just tribal.
No, it's just, that is kind of, that's just all kind of, the IT department?
No, I understand that question. That's just the tribal budget. Okay. So we're kind of basically in the same spot. My recommendation to the council is that we immediately call for a joint meeting with the Board of Trustees to sit down together and to come up with a resolve, an amicable resolve together so that we can help them in, in meeting those goals, creating those infrastructures and see what their needs are. And, and if they have some concerns, tell us what their concerns are because I think we're, we're just miscommunicating. I think that, I truly don't think they understand where we're coming from. That's, that's my perspective. And I would like to sit down with them and to go over those and get their concerns on the table, get our concerns on the table, and then move forward as a result. What can we do to resolve this? And that's what I think needs to take place immediately, as soon as possible. So that's, that's that meeting. Budget Committee meeting met today and the things that were approved or discussed that other than the, I'm not going to go into detail on the three items that are on the agenda tonight. There was an American Indian Chamber of Commerce pledge, pledge discussion for the, the memberships, yes. And I believe that we're going to pay that in 2017. There's a speaker in the city, it's Oklahoma City, Junior League of Oklahoma City, had talked with President Pratt in regard to the sponsorship and working together. The Budget Committee reviewed that request, however, the request would not directly benefit our community or our tribal members or the Ponty Nation. It only benefits the Oklahoma City community. So the Budget Committee denied that request today. Sponsorships range from fifteen hundred all the way to, I think, I mean fifteen thousand all the way to fifteen hundred. The next, we approved the Executive Office Budget Mod number three, they were just moving runnings around for, to cover their travel. The GAVI Commission Surveillance Budget Mod was tabled and sent back for more information. Under other was K. Cowan legal expense from a air lawsuit. The DOI, VIA Southern Range Regional Office FY twenty-seven funding availability, the attorney fees and litigation. It's a, it's funding that's available. Andrew's going to check into that and follow up to see what's available on that. The late contributions payment, funding request, those two items are on the agenda, so I won't go into detail for that. The gift cards for the elders, that's on the agenda. We talked about the Ponty Nation College, the tribal budget expenditures and federal payment reimbursements. Now that the NACTAP grant is underneath the college, that the IT services and the, for processing your payroll and things, because we don't get indirect costs now, so we'll have to do, be done on a reimbursable basis, so we'll be sending invoices. We talked about a cash flow update. Finance gave us an update on that. We're monitoring it very closely. Travel passports. I don't know if you all are aware of TSA regulations, are no longer accepting Oklahoma state driver's license or IDs for, for traveling. So we'll have to get passports for the council right now. We are going to go also check in to see if we can issue tribal passports instead of having to do the state passports. And that won't go into effect until January, but even if, if we're not able to do the tribal passports, then even the employees who travel will have to get passports which will be paid off to programs. But it looks like since we do have travel coming up in business, it also, it doesn't just affect travel, it's also entering into any federal buildings. If you don't have an acceptable form of ID, a federal acceptable form of ID, you will not even be able to enter in federal facilities as well. So we'll probably look at, and it's a process. It's probably about a two to three week process of getting, getting those passports and the cost is about a hundred, up to a hundred and fifty dollars each. So that, that will be coming down the pipe. We talked about the tribal court account. Harrison is going to follow up on that to make sure it has not been transferred, to make sure it gets transferred. We talked about RIMCA's consulting regarding to post-earthquake fees. Oh, one thing that we need to talk about bringing this out in open forum was the elders' Christmas dinner. We have three hundred dollars budgeted for that dinner, but if we want to cater it, of course, it's going to cost more. My suggestion is that the council, we buy, we buy a turkey and a ham and one of the council members offered to cook it and the rest are great side dishes. That's just a thought. Then we also approved the Ponty Business Council Budget Mod number ten. And that was to cover, oh, to cover the legal expenses. Okay, that's Budget Committee. I attended strategic plans, planning today for the election ordinance. We made some good progress today. I think we have three more sections to review. We also need to add the runoff section. So we've kind of made a, since the timeframe is so limited, we have to approve this election ordinance at the next council meeting so that the, the Election Commission can have orientation in December and so, so they can start planning for the May election and they start that process in January. So we have to have the election, new election ordinance approved and in place at the next council meeting. So I challenge the council to make a concerted effort to look over those last three sections and look at any runoff language that you all want in there. And I think Cindy's gonna send out all the changes that were made today. And so you have a clean copy, a red wine copy, to look at what all was made and provide your edits, comments. And you can use the comment feature and the review. And if you have any comments made to a certain section, just add your comment there, send that back to Cindy and she'll send it out to everybody to look at. And try to get it done by, what was that date? December, no, November 30th. November 30th. So we've got a short time to get that done, so we're looking at meeting on November 30th to finalize that.
You want a meeting on November 30th?
I said the power to invite this exactly.
Will that be an evening meeting or a day meeting or whatever you want?
I think we did it for two.
Two.
To the four.
To the four.
Yeah.
But if you have any comments, Anna, please, please send them in and, you know...
No, I just want you guys just to be conscious of us that aren't away elsewhere.
Yes, and we kind of, we talked about that. Well, I think, well, somebody had another meeting too, so we thought, that's why we suggested doing it via email.
All right.
Okay. And the next budget committee meeting will be December 8th at 10:00 a.m. And I believe that's my report.
Thank you, Angela.
Good evening, everyone. I attended the meeting with the USDA at the museum that we had last Wednesday, November 9th. And I felt to be very informative, very informative meeting. They gave us a lot of suggestions on different grants that the tribes are eligible for. And then the representative from this area, he was there and he just let us know all different kind of funding that he can offer, that have the tribe with all different areas have to do with farming, even about grants, even about buying homes, grants they have available to assist with homeownership and buying homes. So it was a very informative meeting. There were three different representatives from the different agencies of the USDA who presented to us. And so it was a, it was a really good meeting and I'm real thankful to whoever set it up. I know we had our representative come and presented to us here, all that, just to introduce himself. I was really impressed by that because it was the first time I had heard of a representative in our area to step forward like that and to come to the Pawnee Nation and to let us know that, you know, he's there to help us in any kind of way. And then we had the follow-up meeting where he actually gave us several packets were given to us that had all the different information in it. And so it was a really good meeting with them. And then just earlier today, I was able to attend the strategic planning meetings where we were going over our election ordinance. Also, I got a response, we met with Sherri Levin from the VIA down in Anadarko, the Southern Range Ranger. She had came up and met with us before about our changes we want to our constitution and also the changes, she's the one who suggested, first of all, we should get our election ordinance because it conflicts with our constitution. And she suggested to us that we should get that change first, especially with election coming up in May. So that's what we've been working on. And now we've kind of got where we got a deadline. And I was wanting us to reach about the 30th, but in this month, so next month, when our new election ordinance commission comes in, then they'll have the new ordinance with which they'll be oriented on. And I'm really happy with the results, reading today and in the meetings in the past, we've come so far and hopefully we'll reach our goal. And then we've, the last meeting, she came to visit us. We gave her a copy of what we had done so far and she was gonna look that over, her and her assistant that was with her and, or her coworker, and then they were gonna get back to us with any kind of suggestions. So they're willing to help us and they're willing to go over the ordinance for us to make sure that we covered all grounds. So I'm real happy about that, with working relationship we have with them. And then they're also going to step up and help us when we start our work on the constitutional changes. So that's all the meetings I attended. Thank you.
Good evening, council and visitors. I attended the webcom for the land buyback program. It was their annual report. And to date, they have spent something like $910 billion of the fractionated lands with the equivalent of, I believe it was 1.7 billion acres of land that has been put back into trust for the different tribes. We are still on the radar. Pawnee Nation is still on radar for the buyback program, but it's a slow process. And it was our, the telecom, but it was just basically just kind of phone numbers out as to the different tribes. And that's all I have.
Good evening, council and visitors. I'll have no reports.
As for me, on November 4th, I attended the Veterans Administration's stand-down in Oklahoma City. This was a all-day thing. Basically, I went to see what it was all about. I'd heard of this, this is an annual thing. It was the first time I had opportunity to go. And it was, it helps veterans who are having, having a hard time. We had, I had to fill out a lot of paperwork before even went to see into the Great Hall, so to speak, of all these vendors that was present that helps veterans. And even medical assistance help was there to give free medical, they gave flu shots, which I got, they checked your blood pressure, just did your, we had physicians on hand. And I wound up shuffled off to a back trailer where they, because I told them I was diabetic. They shuffled me off because, you're going to visit. And I, I take my feet out of my pressure and stuff like that. And I did, because they found something I need to go see my provider about. But it was amazing because all these vendors, it was, you know, of course, you have a lot of women veterans now. And there was people set up, cosmetologists were set up there, giving manicures and haircuts for the ladies and just overall makeover. And for the men, they had barbers there, giving shave, haircuts, and just kind of cleaning up everybody that wanted it. And at the end of this process, you had to carry a paper that came right off to have all these vendors sign up on it after you did receive them and speak with them. At the last station, so to speak, you could give your paper. And there was a whole big room of brand-new clothes. And I felt funny about it because they said, help yourself. Because I did, I didn't need new clothes, but there was, there was some veterans there I felt they were, they were in a bad way, they could use it, so I felt funny. Gave me a big bag and a load of all kinds of clothes. And they were even giving out brand-new Wolverine hiking boots. And of course, they didn't have my signs by the time I got there, so anyway. But it was a very good meeting. I got a lot of information from them and I'll be passing this on to our local veterans that do attend our, well, our Pawnee veterans. And that's where I'll officially sell this information to those attending. But that was a very informative meeting and I'm glad I got to go. Okay, moving on, go to the travel requests. Adrian, you got anything?
They have the VIA offering training, free training to tribal government on December December 14th in Lawton.
Yes.
Lawton, Oklahoma. I would like, I would like to attend that.
I think I have to be on December 14th. As long as you have that.
It is?
Yes.
Today, Friday?
Yes.
Angela, you have anything?
No.
Yeah?
No. Just possibly the context over, is it on healthcare, with the ordinance, had the first annual trial, we'd be hard on it.
Education.
Education.
Yeah. Pawnee Council.
Yeah, possibly that one on my schedule.
I did see something on that. As for myself, thing about this Southern Range Regional Office, having a department with procedures training. I would also like to attend this. I feel it would be beneficial to me, being a very new member of the council, and do whatever I can out of it and put it to use here. That's all I've got. And I'll call for...
I have a question.
Yes.
So would you, both of you attend the parliamentary training instead of the council meeting? I mean, you know, I expressed how I feel about the VIA providing this training. I don't, I don't think we need the VIA to tell us how to conduct business, in my opinion. But that's just me, yes. But I think council business should come before that.
Unless we push the meeting out to 12th, calendar 15th.
Which is that date, the Thursday?
Thursday.
I'm looking at it normally for a pastor.
Andrew, the president, I think, has other tribal too that he wants to put in.
Can I?
Yeah. National Indian Health Board in December. It's for 6th to the 9th, it's for the transition conference for the presidential.
I think I read that all of his travel was paid for.
Yes.
I think this is per deal.
Yes.
Concerns out. So the 15th?
Oh, so you're asking if we can change it?
Yeah, so these guys can go to their...
If we do that, I'd like to go to the VIA.
The reason why I'm gonna go is I think that there's a lot of things that could be offered there that we could implement in our, what was I gonna say, our treaty?
It's okay.
Plan, but, but our, our training for our new council members that come in to just have knowledgeable information about how meetings are conducted. There's so many times I had questions, was this the right way to do it, is the right way not to do it? And there was nobody else who said yes or no, or, you know, there was too many I-don't-knows. So I thought, well, if they're offering this free training, it's a good time to go and learn. And then also could implement it into the orientation for new council members that are coming in. So that's why I have interest in that.
Along those same lines, being a new council member, I felt to be, be kind of like a refresher course, is that I'm sure there's some things that I could use, not everything that they're gonna be offering, I could use, but there's gonna be something there that I could re-implement better myself, the presentations and presiding over council meetings. So that's why we're trying to change this. And I hope that we can change our council, our council meeting to the 15th of December, which is fine.
Council, are you guys okay with the 15th?
I don't have anything on my schedule.
15th works, let everybody go along, if you want to go along. So we'll move to the 15th.
So next, my business council meeting will be rescheduled to December 15th.
Only thing I want to say about that, about changing that, is that, you know, sometimes we have people that have other meetings to go to and during council meetings, we should offer them the same option of changing the council meeting too, if we're accommodating for them. That's the only thing that I think about, you know, when we have them scheduled, so we try to make them, but if something comes up and they want it in something, then, you know, give them that option too. Originally, I had one.
Paying motion to approve the travel request and also to reschedule our next Pawnee Business Fair motion for approval.
I make a motion, we approve the travel requests. And I've taken my name off the list to go, I'll just wait, because we had talked to Sherri and about having, having the same presentation up here too. So you two going, finding out about it and everything, you can check with her about maybe having one up here. Then we can all go to it.
I hear seconded.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Call for a vote.
Amy Anderson, yes. Angela Thompson.
Yes.
Amy Addison.
Yes.
Ron Heer.
Yes.
Adrian Spalding-Horst.
Yes.
Ray Akers.
Yes.
Motion is passed. I'd like to go on to item number eight, tribal development cooperation report.
Well, good evening, everyone. Before I get into my report, I'd like to wish everybody and their families a happy Thanksgiving next week in St. Charles. We have a lot going on right now, a lot of things to report, report on. Starting out, getting in town with the two convenience stores. We have been working, starting working on improvements there. One of the first things that we've done in the last two weeks is move the pizza production from Snack and Pack to BJ's. And the grand opening of that move, or the celebration of that move was last week, where customers walking into BJ's could receive free pizza for the day. That went on for about 10 hours. I swear, there's, provides the pizza for that, by the way. And we gave away a lot of pizza that day. It went over very, very well, got a lot of good feedback. There's a couple of reasons for that move. First of all, it helps open up the fountain area at Snack and Pack because of all of the pizza equipment that's stuck out. It made the fountain area, the coffee tea, and that all congested, were under one person at a time. at a time could get into that area. There's more changes going to be made inside the store, Snack and Pack there as well, but that was the start of that move. The second thing it does for us is, and by the way, we're still offering pizza at both sides, but it creates more traffic at BJ's as well, hoping to improve the performance of that store. There's also work going on at BJ's right now. They were working up until dark this evening, replacing the awning out front from the old cedar shank that was there, and it's looking really nice. At the moment, they've got done, it should be actually finished up tomorrow, unless we have 40 mile an hour or something inhibiting that, but I think we'll be okay. Parking lot is one of the next things on the repair in the center of BJ's. And then after that, with all the cosmetic improvements, then we're looking at doing the name change and the new signage, but we wanted to get the improvements done before the signage and name change went up. Pawnee Star exterior of the building was painted last week. It took on a new look and it looks very nice. If you have driven by and noticed it, there's still lighting and signage to go up in front. The lighting will be, the work on the lighting will start Monday, and the signing will be coming in December to put up. We are doing a grand opening ceremony there on November 28th. Please put that on your calendars at noon if you're able to attend. We are doing a small ribbon cutting ceremony at noon of that day. The staff at Pawnee Star have been working very hard at setting up the retail sign. If you have not been in in the last 10 days, it's drastically different than what it was prior to that. So there's a lot more retail, not limited to just t-shirts and hoodies. Air staff there now started to sell some jewelry, jewelry and other things like that as well in there. On October 26th, I attended a meeting at Downstream, mine in Oklahoma. The purpose of the meeting was discussion of possibility of forming a Oklahoma-Kansas Indian Ag Business Alliance. The meeting was set up by Kate Gills. There were nine tribes in representation at the meeting. Jamie Hip was supposed to be one of the speakers at this, at this meeting, but she apparently had an accident, either broken ankle or foot or leg or something, and was unable to attend. It was a very good meeting. Everybody was very open and very interested in the alliance. This alliance would provide a forum in which tribes could share and learn from each other's experiences and provide technical expertise to the, to the member tribes, to the alliance tribes. The alliance could create a made corridor as an entrepreneurial opportunity for tribal and/or individuals to benefit economically. And just in discussions in the room, for example, there were several tribes there that have already established or have long established buffalo herds. And so just in setting and talking about their experiences, how they handle the animals and what they're doing with the animals was very interesting. And that's just an example of some of the things that were just already being talked about within this alliance. After the discussions that took place most of the morning, then we went on a tour of a lot of, several of the Quawp Hall agricultural ventures. I found it to be very, very interesting in everything they're doing, ranging from their cattle working pens to their buffalo pastures, to their hunting business, to their four greenhouses. Something that I had no idea was going on there was their canine training. They are training canine animals, not only as a military type of dog, it's also in identifying drugs. But something that I did not, did not know that was going on now was where now the, the dogs are being trained, trained to identify pathogens. So they can go through and identify salmonella, E. coli, and those types of pathogens. And so it was really, really interesting and intriguing to see what they had going on. There was also USDA representatives at this meeting. And so as we're touring all of these facilities, what kept going through my mind was how are they doing this? How are they affording to do this? And so it was kind of neat that after we had these meetings, that we had our own USDA meeting that Fanny alluded to, and it was obvious in sitting and listening to the USDA representatives where these meetings were coming from. But I, the alliance, I think is something that there's enough interest that it will happen. There was, there was a lot of the economic development departments from the different tribes there, and they're talking. So I think it's something tribal and TDC that we all have to be involved in and support in developing this alliance. And basically what it amounts to is as we're all trying to grow in agricultural endeavors, we're not having to reinvent the wheel every day when there's other, our other neighbors have gone through this already and can share some of their expertise. As we know, the expansion project has been started. As a demo work was being done, where the dispensers were at the tribal plaza, there was found to be an existing fuel leak in the line that went from the tanks to the dispensers, or pumps as they're commonly called. So this find has slowed down construction while it had to be tested to see how it was contaminated and what needed to be done. Pawnee Environmental, Pawnee Nation Environmental has been involved in where the process. All of the contaminated concrete has now been removed, and now what is left is the contaminated soil. It's basically in an area from about eight foot wide by 140 foot long, or where the dispensers were, or, you know, before they were removed. And so what it was, was that is a, in that line, it's, it's called a flex line. Somewhere to the west of, the furthest west dispenser, there was a leak. Now, we do line tightness tests that are required in Pawnee Nation Environment twice a year, that is actually twice what is required if it was, if it was eight, on non-tribal land. So it's tested twice a year more, double more than what's required outside of Pawnee Nation. So, point is, this meeting, we've been testing that twice a year, nothing has shown a variance on the line tightness test. I don't know if this is something that was caused by the September earthquake or what, but there was a leak, it has been dealt with. Contaminated soil is left to be removed, it's contained, you cannot go anywhere else. And there are estimates, and it's just an estimate because they don't know for sure how much, but it is clay. And so there doesn't seem to be much soaking into the ground, if you will. And so it's looking like, just to put it, before we can understand, it looks like two to three ton trucks full of soil that will be removed and then have to be replaced. The positive side of the construction, I'm going to back that just a minute on that. In, in talking to the company that's been handling the contamination product, they stated that that flex line that was used when the tribal plaza was built, that they, about 70%, 70 to 75% of that line has been replaced already through the years. And the tribal plaza was built in 2006. What year was it built? I can't remember.
It was 2003.
Three, okay. And so we're talking about 13 year old line, which is not that old. It was one of the first flex lines that was used. That product has caught some issues. So it was in our scope of work, however, to go ahead and replace that line already. So that part of the project, if that was already built in to our budget, is just dealing with the contamination and replacing the soil, it's adding extra cost to, to the project. On the positive side, the footage for the expansion of Howlers will be poured tomorrow. And after those footage are poured, then you'll see the expansion of the dining area going out pretty quickly. We're still looking at before the end of this year, having the expanded Redmond Howlers On Wednesday, November 9th, I attended the USDA meeting that I alluded to. I found it very informative, it was strange to, not only from TD side, but just from individual side, the opportunities for low interest financing for homes, for, and how people can qualify, great terms, low interest, 40-year notes. So it was something that I think that as Pawnee Nation taking that further, and I'm sure that's where we're getting the works, to have an open house where people can come and see what the possibilities are. But the gentlemen were very informative. They talked about several different programs that they have, the grant money that are available for rural development, and that was the money that I was alluding to, visiting the Quawp Plaza, where they're getting some of their monies. As far as agriculture, one of the things that we talked about that I thought was something that we really ought to look at was the, what they, they call it a seasonal tunnel. And it is basically an open-ended greenhouse. It's, it's not the normal greenhouse to where it's controlled. It's just a tunnel. And what you gain by that is another growing season. And so you're not having to provide the climate control in this tunnel, it's just providing you with a longer growing season or two than what it would be two in this area. And there's grants for that, and that falls right into the start for the possibility of greenhouses to come after that. But it's a very, very interesting opportunity, some things that I think we'd also try to take advantage of. On November 29th, November 29th is our next scheduled board meeting. I listened for you all the hours of operations for our businesses during the holidays and the email that was sent out. The last thing that I wanted to talk about, which is, and I do not have all the information because the communication was taking place as I was pulling in the parking lot here, but I think it's something that's going to be very, very exciting. Kudix, this is our construction company, as you know, is playing a part in the expansion. They've also had several jobs, one with Church and Edmund, that, that job should be completed next month. They've also done a job for the Cherries and a gaming floor. But Mike Henson, the other owner of Kudix, traveled to Standing Rock yesterday. And the reason for the travel was the tribal leadership there had asked him to come up, and they were entered there, they were interested and had the funding to build a large mud lodge. Like I said, Mike was on the phone landing in Dallas when I was walking in here, and he is very excited, and it looks like that we are going to be hired to oversee building of that mud lodge. The exposure for that, for not only the company, the Kudix in tribal lands, but also the national exposure for both Kudix and the Pawnee Nation could be unbelievable if this does take place. So it's something that, it sounds very promising and very exciting. As I learn more information tomorrow, I will send out information.
That is my report. I have any questions?
I have one. So, Roger, as you align yourself with this ag business up north, could you please enlist Adrian? He is our, he has done a lot of labor for the nation on, doing research with Yellowstone and all these things, and it would really be helpful.
I totally agree. And let me say something. Going up there, I didn't know what that, I didn't know this is what it was. It was not advertised as much as it was to look at their agriculture businesses as they perform. Then get up there, and there's screening, Kate Gills is there, and Jamie Hip, so absolutely nobody was sure for any reason.
No, I didn't mean that. I just meant, you know, as you look forward, if you could get them on the same page, it's helpful.
Right.
Also, just wanting to know when we could expect to, to have all of these businesses done here in town? Is there a, is it the end of the year? Did you say you're going to root Brandon and we're going to do all this?
Yes, the next things to come, obviously, the exterior of Snack and Pack, these repairs, and repainting, all those type of things, and then as well as the paving of the parking lot.
Sure.
We are, we are taking on all of it, or also trying to scrape it out a little bit, to be honest, because of money flow. So I think by the end of the year, I would say most of it would be done. Yes.
Okay, very good. So.
Angela.
Thank you for your report, Roger. And I need to get back with you, I did get your mail about meeting with you and Mike. Just my schedule has been so crazy, I emailed you that time. And so I'll get with you sometime soon and schedule that date so we can know.
That'd be great.
What timeframe has the, the...
Expansion?
Well, the delay, tell them, what are we looking at with the casino expansion?
It's, the delay part's basically over. But, but there was for about 10 days of stopping, because what has to happen, for example, on that concrete, it's, it's, it's tested, removed, it tested, removed. So, I mean, and it's not that that concrete wasn't going to be removed anyway, the problem is the concrete is contaminated, has to be taken to a special dump. And so, as, you know, it just had to be tested and go along. So it was about 10 days of getting here, everybody lined up on the same page and getting it going. All the concrete's gone, okay? And now it's the soil. So there was also that last, whatever that was, inch, almost two inch rain that was right in the middle, but that all filled up the water, so it didn't stay on as well.
So what is the approximate deadline for the casino?
We're, we're still looking at May.
May, okay, okay. Can you give me an estimated, a rough estimated cleanup cost on that?
No. The, the early estimates that I got were $50,000 to $60,000. The reason I'm saying no is because we, I don't know that they have the...
Right, right. That's why I said a, a good and rough estimate. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the council?
Yeah. Adrian? I want to say thank you for, you know, checking all this stuff out as far as the ag plan goes, you know, it's something we've been wanting for a long time. I'm glad you got to see the Quawp Plaza, because the Quawp Plaza's got things going for them up there. And we went, I think, might have been four years ago, and we seen the greenhouses, the buffalo, you know, we know they have beef there and everything, and they talked about how they supplied their, their own tribal programs in the whole area, places as well. And some of the things that we discussed about, you know, there's no reason why we shouldn't be doing that. So I'm glad that you're able to see that. So I'm glad that you're able to see that and these co-fully get all get on the same page and try to make that happen. You said about this rebranding and painting. I was down at TP Smoke Shop the other day. And you may have mentioned this and I just missed it. I saw it was painted, the gas station. Is that what we're going to be painting ours here?
No. No, that was just a sign.
Okay. Because I'd just seen the colors and I'd just assumed, I'd seen some kind of red or some stuff, you know, possible colors. And I didn't know if that was, so it's going to be totally different then or something?
Yes.
And this earth lodge project, you know, I just came back from Standing Rock myself. And when I was there, I had no communications whatsoever, you know.
Yeah, home service.
Yeah, so I was just down at their camps. And some of the people that I met, you know, hey, you're going to go earth lodges? I was like, no. I didn't know what they were talking about. But it was something that they've been talking about for a while. I found out a little later on. And then I happened to talk to Mike. You know, he was asking me about, you know, things that was going on up there and stuff. And to me, this is something really huge. You know, the fact that, I mean, I don't think a lot of people understand the scope of this is because we didn't get a home control for a long time, you know. And they have really embraced this up there in our tribe. I try to tell council and other people around here, you know, that all of that stuff that we've had in our past, which wasn't great, you know, has kind of been put off to the side, you know. Not saying they totally forgot about it, nor have we totally forgot about it. It's off to the side right now. Here's this, you know, that they, you know, there's several tribes that do that. The Mandans, the Dodges, the Erecores, and ourselves. And the fact that they want the Pawnees to be involved says a lot to me, you know. So I hope in every way possible that due respect is taken and make this, you know, as best as possible. Because you know that this is a huge thing.
It seems a walking billboard, you know. I mean, possibly.
And I'm not talking about this advertisements that work for our tribe. I'm talking about the whole.
Evening.
Yeah, the whole aspect of this, you know. You know, the weather's getting colder up there. They've got these temporary buildings that they use as reading rooms. But if they have that, that something's going to be there for a long time. Hopefully, after everything's all said and done, it'll still be there, you know. So it's going to be a reminder of how tribes came together. But for me, it's going to be a reminder how us Pawnees and Sioux's put our differences aside so we could help one another out on the same cause. So I think this is something big for our Kudix construction company. So I hope the best for this endeavor here. So I just want to say that.
If I could add something to this, how fast this has happened. There was talk of building this, but it was all based on volunteer. But then somebody from Georgia put up a substantial amount of money. And this was just like last week. I mean, this, this like Thursday is when this started falling together about. We were contacted that, you know, the leadership there was talking to Kudix. And so Mike was actually in New Mexico on Monday, driven my business, and got on a flight and headed from there about to North Dakota. I mean, it just happened that fast. And so like I said earlier, once I get any more information, I will provide it. I haven't even sent it south to the board yet, so.
I know that they've been discussing it for a while, because in September, when we was up there after we left, an individual had talked to me about that, you know, if the Pawnees get building earth lodges up here for them. And I said, we're struggling just to build one down here at our own place, you know. You know, much less, you know, trying to get up there and build one. And, you know, I don't, maybe I shouldn't have said it that kind of way, but it's the truth, you know. So, but I'm glad that it's started to kind of come full circle here, so.
Any other comments?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
After the casinos, it's so dark and there's buildings over there. And everybody tries to park way to the west. All of us women that go to casinos, it's kind of dangerous. So can you have security kind of out there watching? Because there's women that want to go in their car, scared to walk to their cars. So can we have security support or have them walk or where they lean? Out to the car or something, some kind of support.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Because the south entrance is fenced off. And then with the north entrance blocked off where you can't enter past the first parking, it's causing a lot of growing pains. And so another problem with this is that if a family wants to eat in Howlers and there's not parking on the east side there, then they would have to go to the west side to park. And then if you have, and so the scenario there is if you're a single parent and with young kids, for example, having to handle all that. If you're two parents, you can drop them off at the east door and go around. And so what we, what we did last weekend was we put some signs on our white camry and actually offered eyes back and forth from the west parking lot. Since then, we've been working with the game commission. And they are now going to allow, we've got to take the path. But families that are trying to get the Howlers to eat and park in the west will be able to come through the plaza and go through the, into the stone wall from the plaza and follow the path to get to Howlers instead of having to go around outside with some of the issues that you're talking about. So improved lighting is also something we've got to get done too. But we are working on that, trying to deal with things.
I think with that, the entrance, it's just dark when you're coming in on that north side. People visit, the light visits, you almost go on the turnpike again because it's so close. It's just dark right there. There's no lighting lights or big lights fully.
But the other, the other thing is in just a short time, that north entrance will be open. And so that's going to help solve a lot of this too.
It grows real bad.
Any other comments or questions, Roger?
Glad to see Stone Wolf up on the jumbotron at the OSU game basketball game.
You'd be surprised how many people sent pictures of that.
I just want to thank you for your great work and good report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jane Luther-God, Pawnee Nation College President Report. Good evening. You all have my update that I emailed to you all. And what I brought with me are corrected copies. I should say copies of the bylaws amended in 2010. I've got these posted for you all. But if there's any questions on my update to you, you want to do that first or review those? I had sent the copies out to board trustees for five, I sent one to you. And I didn't know if we were passing forward with the other business council members or not.
If you asked me to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have thought to otherwise. And wouldn't see, are these, are these the same bylaws?
These are the amended corrected, I should say amended versions that were done in 2010. Which we had as a copy of the bylaws, the corrections. And then amendments behind those were in the board trustees voted to amend those bylaws.
And so have we been following these, the, these bylaws or a difference?
Now, these were done before my tenure and just informed by Mr., Dr. Jane writing in this past week. And so we found they were not in my computer or, they were not in my computer or the older computer that I inherited from Mr. Fuller. But our assistant here, a member, was able to find these and pull these up. That's why we distributed them.
Okay, so we had not had any bylaws until we got these?
You had bylaws, but the ones you had were not these amended and corrected versions.
They were not, as they did.
These are red lines. And they're, they're lines drawn through the Pawnee Business Council.
Well, that's the changes that were made.
Well, where's the final?
That is it.
Because the business isn't the final.
That's the corrected version. That's what we got on from you.
Well, this is, this is a draft. It's not the final.
Behind it is the minutes that adopted that draft. But I just found them a few days ago, so.
Counselor, say. Go ahead, I'll, I'll, this is talking to be finished.
I have a question.
Answer.
Mr. Burgess, so the Pawnee Business Council has not adopted these bylaws. These were not presented to Pawnee Business Council for approval after the board of trustees approved them?
If you read through that, and the other bylaws state that the board of trustees established, that they became the mandator of bylaws, not if they were to pass them on to you, as this one states for information only.
So the Articles of Incorporation allowed them? It's on.
It's right here.
Yes, please answer the mic.
Or the, the thing picks it up for the streaming or for the recording. So my understanding was the Articles of Incorporation, does that give them the authority to create their own bylaws?
With review.
With review, which means?
With review, approval.
By the council. So that's my understanding of the Articles of Incorporation to, that these bylaws take the Pawnee Business Council out of that. Is that what you're saying?
I think these were approved in 2006. I believe Mr. Ron, President after Mr. Howlton. Rod Rice, I believe is the president. I did see a document signed off on that, but I didn't think that you needed that. Was that signed off by your council members?
Yeah, I would like a copy of that so I can remember that. Yeah, you mean by resolution?
It wouldn't be by resolution, it would be by motion.
By motion, it would.
I think it's really kind of, my opinion, inappropriate to have to sit here and read this during a council meeting. This is the whole problem, Mike. It's nothing personal, it's business. But we are so confused. We are, if there's just seems like such a lack of communication between the board of trustees and the tribal council, then you hand us this draft that you said is approved. It, I think it's very inappropriate to have people sitting here, we're sitting here trying to read this stuff. I think that we need a package. I think we need a meeting, I think we need a meeting between the trustees and the council to sit down and discuss this stuff and find out what's current and what's not. I'm not privy to anything that has happened since a year ago, May. Do we have anything, I mean, this is, this is going to, pardon me. This is going to require research, right?
We've been looking for, we've been looking for council, council. Looked through the minutes and stuff to try to find approval recently.
Yeah, I mean, this is a draft. It's not, this is not a final document. It's a draft. I know that. I'm a document engineer. I know this. I, I, I don't know what more to tell you. I don't know where you're going with this. Let me put it back to you. I don't know where you're going, what's driving you to show me this tonight, this draft? And we're all reading a package.
What's driving me to show that to you is President Frack who moved to the office when I was at their Monday and told one of our employees that I'm not providing information to you all. And if I take information over there for each and everyone, that's well defined, I'll see you to get it, I don't know. Now, at the same time, when I'm providing information to you on your technical staff and you're told I don't provide it. So yeah, we have a communications problem. At the same time, what I'm looking at is page seven of this document. And it's signed off by, I guess you'd say, Trey Gervin Benson, the attorney who filed it. It's addressed to Call Cor, dated June 12, 2006. It's signed, it's signed off by law firm, a witness where the 30th day of March 2006 it was filed. Don't leave the office. This is all I have. I have no other, this is all on computers, this is what was brought out. And I was still looking for other documentation.
Yeah, okay, so we're going to just call this nothing tonight. I would consider this nothing. We haven't read it, it's not a final. We've got research to do on our end. You certainly have research to do on your end.
We're looking for it.
Okay, come here, Jim.
I have, I do have a question. There's a, there's a letter here to a Miss Ann, Cam, who's sick for V. Gray, admits an LFP.
Yeah.
And it references a council resolution 0614. Can you look that up, please? Also, this is an approved document by our board of trustees with red lines through them. And the page numbers are not consistent. There's three, three, five, five lines through. You know, I, it's, it's errors, you know, from our college.
This is how I keep it up.
I understand, I'm not blaming you. I'm not blaming you at all. I'm talking to the board of trustees. And you all may have not even been there, Cordelia, during that time. But there's just so many inconsistencies in doing our research. You know, I guess, I think where that lack of communication is coming from or not getting the documents is when we request the information, it's provided to as piecemeal. You all have to go and, and probably not through any fault of yours or, I don't know where the documents went to. We're not, we don't, we request information and you all have to go search all your old boxes, your boxes. I mean, that's, that's not how you conduct business. And even, even coming into it, you know, you, I mean, I would want to, as a new board member, I would want all my governing docs. I want copies of all of them. I want to be able to read them. And if anybody asks me something, I could be able to go to those documents and say, here they are, you know. So I'm just a little bit, not upset, but frustrated, if you will. You know, as, I'm sure it's on both sides, we all are. But to be presented a document that was approved, that supposedly approved, not supposedly, that was approved, because it has a district court stamp on it.
It's not numbered either.
Right. You know, I'm just, I'm just a little bit concerned in how we've been conducting business.
Right.
You sent it to me?
And based on this, I mean, if you were just to believe it, I can see where you would think that the Pawnee Business Council has nothing to do with the college. Reading this. Okay. So, okay.
There is a resolution that should be sent if you all want it together.
Did you send it?
I can't. I have a question for. I can't. I have a question for Amber.
Yes.
Um, you have been with the college since the beginning, haven't you?
Yes.
Did you happen to type this new, the final draft up of this bylaws?
Yes.
And this is it?
This is not the final. I didn't find the final. I had like, we all had our emails deleted somehow because of like, our bill wasn't paid because of a new card on Yahoo. So I lost the emails. I think it's in there, but if I have, it's in my external hard drive. I'm still looking for that.
I will share this. Pardon me. Cindy, could you please share that also with Mr. Burgess and the Board of Trustees?
This is the approval of the Articles of... This is... This resolution is just the approval of the Articles of Incorporation.
Right.
This is not approval of the bylaws. And also, you had presented us a resolution the last time you reported to us. And it talked about a charter and I requested the charter and I haven't received it to date.
And we haven't found the charter because that resolution might have been in reference to your academy. When you started the academy, when they first started in 2004. Now, high school or academies require charter. But when they established a change, then it from Pony Nation Academy, Pony Nation College was a resolution. And that's all that's required is a resolution. Why did that word chartering have been added?
So what is that resolution? Because this is talking about the academy, this resolution.
He provided it to us at the last meeting.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, at the last meeting. And I thought, did you scan that in and send it to us? So we should have it on email from the last meeting. But the resolution references a charter. That's why I requested the charter.
The file I have, there's no such thing as a charter document. And that's why I found that resolution. I didn't find any charter attached. I'm sure that it's attached good.
Right.
You know, all I have is that copy. So I don't know what charter is. And it references academy, which is not a college. But when you became a college, which the Board of Trustees did in 2006, you know, it was established by a resolution again. And that's all it's required by a higher running commission or even by DOE to show that you're a tribal college established by tribal government. That's what makes Pony Nation College eligible for funding.
Okay, well, um... I actually researched that, you know, that I did it myself. I talked to the previous president who was here when it was founded. And he said, there is no charter. There's a resolution.
What's that mean?
I'm Stacy Burns, Project Director and Director of the Pony School. And he said, you're not going to find a document that says charter. There's not one. There's a resolution that changed it from the academy to the college. And that might be why me and him always have that question. Yeah, and here is another instance of just things being done without the proper documentation. And we've inherited it.
Exactly.
We... You know, I reiterate my recommendation and we need to get together with the board. We need to have a face-to-face sit-down. You tell us your concerns. We'll tell you our concerns. Let's sit down. Let's get through those concerns. Let's come up with a resolve and let's implement it.
Okay.
This going back and forth and doing, you know, is just, is unproductive, if anything. It's unproductive. And we continue to hear things that were, you know, were against the college. We are not against the college. We do not... The college has done some great things for our tribe's members. And we want you all to be successful. We want you all to be able to continue. We don't want to do anything that's going to hinder you or from moving forward. But our concerns are the infrastructure. No finance, no IT, no HR. How are you all going to do all those things with the limited money that you have? How? I mean, if you... I mean, that's all we want to know. And we want a plan in place, you know? We want to be able to support you and you to operate, you know, to do your own thing so that our staff and we're not involved in that on a day-to-day basis.
Right. We were in council and we all agreed on that, that we are supportive of the college. I have a nephew who's two classes out from a bachelor. I mean, these things, we get that. I'm going to tell you what the rub was. I want all of you to hear what the rub was. Mike? I've known Mike for 40 years. Nothing personal. I like Mike. He came in, he delivered his college report. Two days prior to that, they had taken all the funding. We were dispersing the funding for you. The funding would come to the tribe. And everybody got paid, the bills got paid and all that because it came through the finance department. That's my understanding. All of a sudden, all of a sudden, it stopped. So when our finance and accounting people started trying to pay the bill, the draw had been stopped and it had been taken, authorized and put in a bank here in Pony. That's the rub. It's not that that happened, if that's how it's supposed to happen. I mean, it's all communication, folks. The idea, I felt personally, very slighted, very disgusted because we weren't told that that happened. Had we been told, by the way, you know, we moved that funding over this last week and we're going to set up our own deal and this is how we're going for it. And you are not liable as a council, you are not liable for that $50,000? Great. We didn't hear any of that. And I get to hear that, that we are not liable. That's where this is all going.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I thank you for letting me address you.
Sure.
And I want to say to you, our ancestors are here, especially Elizabeth, really. And so just think really hard and listen, please. Okay, the reason that we, the Board of Trustees, are so upset also is that there was a terminated employee. And she was terminated August the 29th. And we didn't... I'm sorry, April the 29th. And we did not know that she was still being paid through your system. She was still for five months. She was still being paid. We did not know until about the third month. And a student had overheard her at the casino talking that she was being paid. That the money's just taken, you know? Okay, and that's huge, you know? I mean, she was duly terminated, period, okay? And that was very upsetting. And then also, I want to say, for us to break away and get our own system, I mean, this is part, it's the college's money from the grant, and you understand that. And you were handling the finance course in doing that. And, you know, because we didn't have, we weren't set up to do that at that time. Okay, with that happening, and then for us, for accreditation, you know, we have to be able to be responsible for our own monies and our own system of paying and the fiscal agent. And we want that. And that's what we did. And so also, I want to say, on... We were notified by Glenn Washington, who is our DOE from Washington DC, August the 10th, 2016. And we had met all of our goals and objectives and submitted all reports required for three continuous awards. And she had one major concern, Glenn had one major concern, which affected whether we could get to continue with our award for year three. According to the G5 system, Pony Nation had not made a drawdown in over six months. And we had only spent $102,494 of our $451,963 awarded budget for year two. Therefore, they had determined we did not have need for the funding to continue for year three. And so it was because of, you know, not having a drawdown from Pony Nation. But then therefore, a drawdown, she, we told them, you know, that you were handling it, the Pony Nation was. And so she contacted the right person. And therefore, a drawdown should be made every quarter at the minimum. And she contacted Laura Milton and able to make a drawdown on August the 28th, 2016. And Glenn advised us, if this happened again in year three, when decisions for year four continuation awards are being made, we will not be considered for a continuation award. And so with that also, I mean, that wasn't the determination factor. I would say our goal, our strategic plan is for accreditation. And you understand that. You understand. But we have to be able to manage our own funds. And we did. And we did. And we started doing that, you know? And then we get the certified letter from your AG, you know, demanding that money back. And it isn't the nation's money. It's the college's money. And I have, you know, I have written you and responded to each letter that we've received from Mr. Pratt, from your AG. And, you know, I don't want to go through reading them. Have you received them?
I've received it and I found it to be very nasty.
Nasty?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry.
I was a little offended by it. In fact, I didn't want...
No, because I didn't want to be alarmed like that.
It kind of tapped a little bit on this restlessness. But, and I understand it. And I get it. And I understand where you're at. And just hear me, okay?
Okay.
And I'm just going to speak for me, counsel.
Okay.
I have no idea that you didn't have a drawdown. I didn't have any idea. I mean, I'm not even... This communication, did you know that? I didn't know that. The communication stinks.
No, actually, that's...
I was on council in 2015.
In February.
May. May of 2015, I was head counsel. We need a comprehensive report from Mr. Burgess or between us. We need to communicate, have meetings, note these things. The last time that the Board of Trustees was here, we had a luncheon. It was nice. We got to kind of, you know, mingle around and sat in a U-shaped table and had discussions. But there was no clear agenda, if you recall. Everybody was kind of introducing. It took two hours. They had to do some stuffs. And then pretty soon, it was lunchtime. It was like, well, what's next? Because it was, I thought it was a strategic plan session that ended up to morph and be nothing. So I, myself, as a supporter of Pony College, we need communication. I have no idea that there was a problem with the draw. I don't have a problem that you wanted to take the money and start, you know, maturing and what have you. However, we weren't told that. That's the problem. It's the problem. So all we know is that we're liable for $50,000 and we're freaked out. That, we don't need that on this council. We work very transparent. We've got our hands on the table and we want to do the right thing.
Well, and you understand it's $50,000 about it.
And I get that.
Okay.
And then in your letter, you said that, you know, we just don't really do too much. Well, the Pony Nation, you know, awards $187,000 a year. That's a lot of money.
Right.
We're just a small tribe. That's significant. We got elders that might be able to use that money. But we're supporting the Nation College because that's what we believe in. We want our children educated and our people educated.
You asked me a question. You said you were going for accreditation, right?
Correct.
When?
Okay, let me tell you. We have spent six months, six months with this fighting pretty well or bunking heads with the council because of that terminated person. And we have spent six months just concentrating on that or concentrating on the meetings that we have with you that are scheduled and with the executive session meetings and different things. And, you know, and so we have a strategic planning meeting. We had a strategic planning meeting six months ago and it was canceled because of that. And then we have not, then we were going to have one with you and have a MOU, MOA with the Pony Business Council. We all showed up. We all showed up. All the Board of Trustees did. Not all of the council did. But anyway, and like you said, it would, you know, it ended up like...
But when are you going for accreditation? Are you right now, currently?
We're trying.
You're trying? Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. Because you said that you're going for accreditation.
Right.
And I'm assuming that's your main goal, is to try to get accreditation, correct?
That is.
He told us that you guys aren't going for accreditation. Am I wrong?
No.
What did he say of this?
Last, was the last meeting?
Well, it's probably not right. I mean, it's not going to happen tomorrow. That is our focus. You have to have a strategic plan to get to that accreditation.
In two years, you haven't had any strategic plans to try to get that?
No.
Okay. I'm just asking questions. I'm just trying to get a grasp on things here because I'm, once again, it's communication. I'm hearing different things, so. Angela, you had a question. I'll come back to answer it. Just by receipt.
Well, in response to your email, I'd like to see it have a copy of that about the drawdowns from Miss Washington. I don't have an email related to the drawdown.
That came to our office, not to you all.
I know. I would like a copy so I can see in writing what her concerns is because I've never seen it. And I brought this, I met with Miss Washington last week in DC and her boss, Miss Utz, Robin, is who's the Branch Division Director for DOE for this grant. And so I brought up, I went there to reassure them about their concerns with the drawdowns and the pain of the ghost employee concern. And when I brought up the drawdown, she said, she looked at me like she didn't know what I was talking about. She said, that was not an issue. You know, she goes, the only thing that we had a problem with was paying this employee who had been terminated without the college knowing was her only concern. So that's why I would like a copy of that because she basically said that was not an issue when I went to meet with them. And to go back about the draw, I want to address that drawdown issue anyway. What had happened according, before I went to meet with them, I asked our staff to provide a detailed report so that I can have everything in front of me and know exactly what happened. Because this all happened prior to me being on council. This was, I believe, in year one of the NACTEP award, there was late access to the drawdown site for one instance. When the Pony College received the award, Ms. Mountain tried to do a drawdown but couldn't and eventually found out through the G5 system or helped us that she was unable to see any award because the grant was under a separate DUC number and FBI number. And so she noticed that Ms. Burns... And so she noticed that Ms. Burns, or is it Ms. Burns? No, I'm sorry. That Ms. Burns and all the documents were completed to add her into the G5 system. And she was listed as a FPOC, which is the Financial Point of Contact. And the first drawdown was completed in April of 2014 where the grant, once access was gained into the G5, and that was approved. And that's all documented in the system. In year two, there were several issues that interrupted the frequency of the drawdowns, mainly staffing and workload, which was not any part of the college. It was on our part. As everybody's aware, that we've been without a finance director until Mr. Perry retired. And that position has been up and down, up and down for I don't know how many years. And so that we have staff doing double duties. So that was, you know, no fault of the college. It was a lack on our tribal government side for vacancy in that position. In year three, the Nation hired additional staff, which left most of the accounting duties in the finance office and allowed more time to concentrate on the financial status of the individual federal reimbursable programs. The college NACTEP grant is based on a reimbursable basis. And this is another thing that concerns me for the college. You all have taken over these funds, but how are you going to pay them? You can't draw down the money and then pay them. You pay them and then you draw it down to reimburse you. So without that stable revenue in your accounts, how are you all going to operate on a reimbursable basis? That's one concern that I have. Because for your very first, once you took over the NACTEP grant, you all drew down $50,000. There's a three-day rule by federal OMB requirements that you have to expend those dollars within three days. You can't hold on to them or you're out of compliance. When we met with you all, it was the fifth or sixth day and you still had not expended that $50,000. So that's another concern. That, you know, we talk about those dollars being at risk, but even in your first action of taking over those dollars, you drew it down and kept it longer than what's required by OMB. The other thing is the accreditation. I know that's a long process. I do, I work with tribes in health accreditation, and it's not an easy process. So if it's anything like that, I know it takes some time and planning. But the college has been established since, what, 2003, right? Over 10?
About, I think the category was four.
Oh, four, okay. Okay, so, you know, so that's our concern. If we're moving towards accreditation, we've been in business or working towards that since 2005. And we're not anywhere near accreditation than we were in 2005, are we?
No, we're not.
So those are some of our concerns.
The first attempt at accreditation was in 2011. Dr. Flores sent a letter, what's called the preliminary information form. And the response from the Higher Learning Commission stated exactly that the college was not ready for accreditation after their first review. And so we had to step back. And now we have to regroup and move forward. Two of the situations off the top of my head. One was financial stability. Grants and contracts for services are not considered stable. The other side of the point is to expand our curriculum and to provide campus with library, computer, and the other administrative function that go making ourselves a college has to be issued. We're trying to do that through grants, with a high competitive. The third part of the point is business council. What assistance you have given, financially or space-wise, is not great enough to show that we have money in the bank, stability, and that we can operate for at least a minimum two years on funding other than grants. Hefty donations, yes. Hefty input from the business council with funding going into the escrow account, yes, that would count for you. But the amount that you give to cover the one salary which basically is that of the president and then some of the donated space, even though we don't pay a lot of space costs, the donated space you give is not great enough because we can't expand to other classrooms like we want to. So now we're looking at doing five-day classes and making our classroom days longer. As to why, we're also looking at trying to establish campus at other tribal sites. Now, if that hasn't picked up, only because responses haven't come back from the two tribes we've been trying to work with. That doesn't mean to talk with this person, but that person's not talking back. So I'm making these visits and trying to expand. So that's some of the area to increase student enrollment, which is one of the fallacies, I should say, a fault we didn't have when they tried to send for the $50,000. The other side of the point was the internal organization. You're right, there was not enough staff to do all these things administratively. And we can't do that with the amount that we have being strictly for administration because the grant, Pawnee Nation College Grant, the only set program is only for the faculty and some of the administrative personnel that is on that grant. It doesn't cover HR Director, Finance Director. It will not cover the president at all. Even at the time they did cover the president to 10% of the salary, the finance office argued about that. The finance office would not acknowledge that the grant would pay 10% of the cost. So some of the times, the college's third-party revenue had to cover some of the costs of the president. Now, that's all before my tenure. And so by the time I beat it there, I was denied some parts of tribal whatever after 10% allowed, that was allowed to the grant. And it was written in the grant. So eventually, it came out. And that's where the tribe had to kick in full 100% support of the president's office and the driver we used or the part-time, half-time assistant. That's still not going to make it, I know that. So all of these things, if you want to see, we don't have time to sit here and calculate all that, you know, and then come back to it and tell you. If you want to say, "Sit down," which we wanted to do, we started in July, okay? But in the afternoon, there was only one council member who came back to the meeting. So we sat and we talked a little about what we really wanted to do and to hold another meeting, but we did not. To go back, before your time, Angela, Sammy, Darryl, Donna, I have approached the prior executive director, Lisa, to set up a meeting for MOU. We set up a meeting. He got canceled, cut term. Set up another meeting to discuss the MOU and the fiscal responsibility and how we're really going to work this grant because you, as the fiscal agent, had some responsibilities. I, as a college representative, CEO, and finding out, I'm the authorized representative. I held liable for $480,000. I was held liable when you all were the fiscal agents. The authorized representative signs off on that contract. And when the money's misappropriated or misspent, not according to the contract or directions to follow contract, I can be liable for it.
I think what we're talking about in regard to liability is if anybody were to sue the college, they're not going to look at you. They're not going to look at the Board of Trustees. They're going to look at the Pawnee Nation. And that's what we will rely on, the liability in it. If there's anybody that wants to sue, they're going to come back to the Nation. They're not going to come back to the college. And that's where the liability stands in my eyes. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, and then back to us being the college's accreditation means we have to handle our finances. We have to handle all of the policies and procedures the college is expected to have. And we have to live by those policies and procedures. That's our faculty, staff, student handbook, guidelines for a college. The guidelines we follow cannot be superseded by tribal policy. It has to be tribal college policies that we initiate one or another act.
So that's exactly what we want for you. And that's exactly what we want for the college is for you to mature and be on your own and doing your thing. We want that. The rub is, Mike, is that you did tell us.
Do you have another home conference that we have?
No, I'm talking...
I explained to you all, we met with President Pratt. Gave him the information. That's President Pratt. You need to share this with your body. You explain to them. That is what we expired to the time it happened.
Well, you reported, and President Pratt said no. And that's why he stated that. Yes, he said he said completely.
He said that in front of you.
Yes, he did.
He was basically calling you a liar too.
Well, we're not, I'm not calling you a liar. I'm just saying that you were here on a Thursday and reported for the college and you did not give us any insight that that had happened. So it seems very underhanded. I mean, if you think that everything's going normal and then all of a sudden said, "We're getting a notice that money's been pulled out and put into..."
Out of work.
Yeah. Not really out of our account, but out of, you know, the drawdown. You see what I'm saying? It just seems, and that's why I told you. It seems very subjective. It seems very underhanded. And I told you all these little, you know, adjectives because I was kind of blown away. It made me, it really concerned me. So that's where we're at. And I'm going to call you out on that. Because I would expect, even if you told President Pratt, you should still reiterate. When you're giving your report, everything should be documented, whatever is meaningful. And that, by far, is very meaningful. For all of you, I am the Board of Trustees representative for the Business Council. And I'm disappointed that we have only one Board of Trustee, Cordelia. And our Vice President, Julia Goodfox, is still on sabbatical. Is that right? And your secretary now. I was removed last, what, six months ago? And the treasurer is Brad Sewell. He replaced Elizabeth. And then we had Dr. Evans, Dr. Les Ridingman, Martin Wade, and George Howell. Now, we were, it was understood, or it was, we were told that Martin Wade and George Howell had resigned. Is that official? Okay. Do we have, in the Bible, they have to be in writing. And I know that we had asked for the copy. I'm sorry, I didn't have an answer to that. Was that official?
Yes, the resignations were sent in.
Okay. But we have not received, we have not seen. Even the Board of Trustees have not seen them, is that right?
Yes.
I have not seen any.
She said, "Yes, they have."
Yeah.
I have seen any, it's the Board of Trustees.
Okay, but I am a Board of Trustee and I have not seen any of those resignations. Are you acknowledging her as being on the Board of Trustees?
May I say something?
Yes, Cordelia.
Okay, well, I know Leanna had asked to be off of the board numerous times. And then Mr. Pratt said, you know, that she cannot be, and she was challenged, you know, that, you know, they wouldn't allow her to be off of the board. And so Mr. Howell, the chair, had written Mr. Pratt in person also and told that Leanna wanted to be off of the board. And so we thought she had been taken off of the board. And so that's how come some of the emails were not sent to you at that time. Then you, just now, you know, in the last meeting, you were there.
I have been at all the meetings. I have not missed any meetings. I can tell council that I was very, very frustrated probably a year ago. And I did request it because you see what I have been going through. And that was the only reason. And I believe the thing was secretary, the office, not the board. I wanted to be, I did not want to be secretary.
Oh, you want, okay.
I just wanted to clarify to the intention to, you know, what Sammy had said in regard to not notifying us that that meeting, two days after the drawdown was made, you know, that, I was taken by surprise as treasurer that that happened without my knowledge or without even a courtesy email saying, "This is our plan." You know, after us being the fiscal agent for since inception of this grant. And so, but the major thing for me is that the college does not have the infrastructure or the revenues to build the infrastructure needed for accreditation and to operate their own program, I mean, their own building. I mean, to even operate this NACTEP grant. It's a reimbursable grant. You have to have the revenue. And my understanding, your third-party revenue is only approximately about $300,000 annually?
Not even that. I think you want to count the $100,000 that you put in and half of that goes back to your administrative cost. And then we earn, we may earn close to $75,000 in our tuition revenue. And then we're going to earn $45,000 in escrow reimbursement revenue as well. So what is that, $210,000, that flows to us?
Okay.
I'm just guessing.
Okay, so see, I mean...
So we have the capability. Yes, we have money in the bank. We have savings account. And our, I think that on the average, every two weeks, our payroll is going to be around $35,000. Am I right? $25,000?
Now, is that just...
NACTEP.
That's just straight payroll?
That's just NACTEP.
What about your benefits?
Well, I call for me to know how we can reimburse you off of paying those benefits.
And I believe that we're going to be sending a bill. We talked about that in Budget Committee today.
Okay.
And invoice for those expenses. But we, I mean, but if you're going to get, if we can't come to an agreement to where we can work towards this infrastructure, building the college an infrastructure and you operate that, that, those funds, they need to be audited. Has your third-party revenue ever been audited?
Angela, again?
I mean, just answer the question, yes or no.
It's being audited right now because...
Okay, but no, prior to this year, has it ever been audited?
Again, I'll tell you. When I came into the office, there was no audit. I started establishing the process to get the audit.
I understand.
I called for an audit in April, because I'm, y'all wanted a forensic audit.
Well, now, Mike, that semantics right there. I mean, there was issues coming up. We knew you were working towards your audit. Anything that you wanted to do in your audit, you didn't have to wait on us for a forensic audit. If you wanted to do your audit, you all, you all have been acting on your own since then. If you wanted to do an audit, you should have done your audit. You shouldn't, you didn't have to wait on us because we ordered a forensic. A forensic audit is something totally different than a regular year-to-year audit. A year-to-year audit is to make sure that the revenue that you're operating is being managed and expended in accordance to your own policies and procedures. And so that's another concern of mine. Your third-party revenue has not been audited ever and no fault of yours from the time that you were in that position. I don't hold you accountable for that. I'm just saying that's a concern as a treasurer that that has never been audited. I mean, your NACTEP's been audited through our audit, annual audit. And so, you know, you know, that piece of it's covered.
I said it because I've said that three or four times in meetings before.
Right, right.
So we are currently being audited for a forensic style audit. He has, as far as I know, we did all the documentation he's required or asked for. We gave documentation on the line where he posed the question of why do we want a forensic audit? So we gave him the documentation about Ms. Julia Gasco. So we gave him the documentation about Ms. Julia Gaskell, so that, so he can see where that initiated from. And then he informed us that the only audit being done forensically will be on our records, and it won't involve all the financials for the college, because he's not gonna audit the financials that y'all did from 2015 to 2016.
Okay, but the third-party revenue is inquisitive, right?
That's the only thing he's auditing. He's not auditing the federal side of it. Y'all have said, all finances should be forensically audited. So that's my question, is why not?
I just had a statement to make, and as I say, we only have one Board of Trustees. Thank you for coming, Cordelia, and, you know, I, it just worries me sitting here listening, it seems like the more we talk about this, the more comes out that, you know, that concerns me and that I wasn't even aware of. And one of the things is that, it's just, I just find it really strange that there are terminated employees that was paid all those months, and you guys weren't even aware of it.
Yeah.
Why, why aren't you aware of it? Why, why don't you look at your financial statements to find out how this is coming down? That right there is, is a big concern that. The Board of Trustees, you don't even look at financial statements that the President of the College or whoever takes care of your finances on that side, don't even look at any kind of financial bank statements or anything. So that, that right there, that really concerned me, the fact that this person went on to repay. Well, my question was, well, why would that happen? And well, you're under our payroll, you have to go by our fiscal policies and procedures and everything. Information on that termination was requested time and time and time again, and the information was never given to the Pawnee Nation in order for them to terminate that employee and take them off of our payroll system. So I don't know if you were told that or not, but that's the truth that matters, is that there's, there is a procedure that we go through, even in the termination of employee, that there is paperwork that needs to be done, to be handed in, to be assured that every step was taken, that needed to be taken according to our policy. And that those steps weren't being taken, even though they were being requested, requests weren't being answered, they were being ignored. That's why it's been on for this long length of time. And that information wasn't turned over to our HR department until, maybe, September. So, so that's just my, my statement here. And then, you know what I did, you know, and I'm just going along, you know, we were all in the same boat, you know, that fact that things just happened without even telling us. You know, you just came in and just took money out of the tribal account, the guy that bothered, belonged to you all or not, you know, and you just did it behind our backs, you know, and it's just like, why couldn't we just come here and say, well, we wanna go on our own, we're gonna move our money up underneath you, and, and we're gonna try to go on our own? You know, so, so then, you know, and then that's all we were saying. Because we want this college to be successful, we want it to be here. It's done so much good for our community, not just our tribal community, but the whole city of Pawnee, it's done so much for our students. And my worry, my worry is that, that you're not gonna succeed because you don't have the financial backing. That's my worry. And even if you have this grant, and you take it, and you do what you want, it, you know, that, that you're gonna cause the college to fail. You know, right now, we're your safety net. The Pawnee Nation, we're your safety net, and we support, we support the college, we've been supporting it. And, and if it was up to me, and I had the money, I would, I would want, I would want to be able to give the college that money where we could get our accreditation, and where we could be successful. Because I see all the good that it does for our people here, and that's what I want, you know? And, and this stuff, you know, I just really, I just felt really disrespected by all the actions that, that, you know, came about and everything, and, and I'm, you know, I don't understand why we're not being upfront and honest, you know, so that's just kinda like, you know? And yeah, we're gonna tell you our concerns, you know, but to me, I wish you all well, you know, if you were to venture out to yourselves, and if you wanna, I wish you well. I really do hope that the college, you know, succeeds, I really do, you know, but there's just, that's course number one, is that lack of communication, and we have been trying. And the reason why he's standing right here is because I wanted that. I wanted to have open communication with Pawnee Nation College. I requested that be put on our agenda for him and for TDC. I said, we need to get a communication going with all the entities in our nation, that they could come here and report to us, so we could have a, have a, just some kind of contact with one another. And so that was my request, that, hey, come over here, talk to, tell us what's going on, you know, and then, and I don't mean come over here and do a song and dance for us, I mean, come over here and tell us what's going on. And I feel like that, you know, we weren't fully informed, and so, yeah, and I felt disrespected, and I felt like, you know...
Counsel, Counsel.
Anyway, that's my, that's my opinion on the whole thing, and, and my questions, you know?
Okay, you're repeating pretty much what everybody else has heard on their minds and thoughts, and I'd like to talk with, see what Cordelia has to say.
And I just wanna address Sammy on, I'm so sorry about that letter that I sent, the last one, that you felt disrespected, because I don't mean that. I really, really, I write that with, you know, with true words and with all my heart, because I am really scared for the college. I really am scared, because when you had your meeting, your general meeting, November the 5th, and you had an executive session to, you know, to talk about dissolving the Board of Trustees, doing away with the Board of Trustees, I mean, how do you think that makes us feel? I mean, we are volunteers, you know, for the college, you know, public volunteers, and look who you have, and not because they're not here, you know? I mean, Dr. Evans, he's a busy man, that's a threatened brother, is being a doctor, he did not probably even know this was gonna happen. And, and if it hadn't been for an email I got yesterday from Mr. Burgess, saying that he was going to, you know, be here, I just wanted to show you with faces, and with staff, and with members from Pawnee, and the students, we support him. You're, you're telling us to, Board of Trustees, you directing us, you demanding us, you know, to, you have no confidence in him. We, we do, and so does the students, and so does the staff, and so does the town of Pawnee. I mean, he's run this for four years, and so, and we don't have no confidence, I mean, that's, you know, no confidence, what, his mannerism and his speech, what? You know, we need it in writing, so we, we have a meeting coming up, and we meet quarterly, that's why we not know about the monies being, you know, still taken out of the budget that you were still paying for a terminated person for five months. But anyway, you know, we just seeing that, that you were going to dissolve the Board of Trustees, and, and we have James Ridingman resign, George Howell resign, and Marty Wade resign, three good Pawnee men. And because of the demands, and because of, you know, the involvement that this council has put, you know? And you know, I know a lot of you have grants and rent grants, the grantor does not want to be involved with any tribal politics going on, and they, they do not, they do not even wanna see that. And so, after your meeting, Angela, and I, and I wrote you an email and thanked you, you know, for taking the time, because I knew that Glenn Washington could explain, you know, everything to you about that grant money, you know, and how it is for accreditation for us to control that. And, and so, I was very thankful that you did go see her. But then after that, I don't know what was said, what was done, how the meeting went or whatever, but a red flag is being raised for us even thinking, of them thinking about giving us our continuation for the grant monies. And that it's tribal involvement, they do not want that. And, and I know, you know, you have had grants before, and you know that the grantor does not wanna get in the politics. And me being the only Board of Trustees here, like I said again, you know, if Wade was here, he'd still be here, Leanna's here, yes. But I just, you know, want to express to you that the involvement, you know, for ten years, for ten years, the college has, has done it on its own, and I know you're thinking, how in the world did it do it? But it did, and it survived, and it has been outstanding. The more students that they have had, the more curriculum that they have given to the students. And under my, you know, he's been here four years, and under his leadership also, it hasn't dwindled down, it has been better. And so, you know, I could go and look at all of the, you know, improvements and progress that has done, the growth that has done, how many students we have, it is amazing, it really is. And so, please, trust us. And, and I don't think there's trust there, and, and I'm sorry about that, I really am. You know, speaking for the Board of Trustees, I really, really, really am.
I've got a couple little things to say, you know, as I'm to your, or what you said there and everything. One of the things I picked out of that is that you said, you know, you only meet every quarter, and out of every quarter, you didn't know about certain things. I would think being on Board of Trustees, you would wanna know about things all the time, not just every quarter when you meet. You know, I mean, this is, this is some pretty serious stuff, you know, I would think, you know? You know, I mean, you know, and to sit around and wait till the next quarterly meeting to find out what's been going on with the college, you know, I think that's not the way to be, that's just my, my thing.
But for the last six months, we have, this has been on our agenda daily, I mean, daily, it really, really, really has, you know?
To move, to move...
But we do that.
No.
No.
Father, did you have a question?
No, first of all, and this might just have to come from me, I apologize for the way that, or I regret the way that the removal of the Board of Trustees was put on the agenda. And I know that Pawnee Nation College needs the autonomy, that's always been, that's always been part of accreditation, and, and I have seen the college work really hard, I saw Dr. Fuller work 100-hour, almost 100-hour work weeks, so dedicated, doing so many things, and without his determination and work ethic, you know, I don't think that we would be there now. And then, I, I think there's been mistakes made on both sides, and I think there's been disrespect on both sides. And I think that we all need to just come together and keep the students and keep the college at mind, and keep our emotions under control, and move forward, and make Pawnee Nation College the best that we can.
But, like I was saying, we need to move along. A lot of things have come out tonight which I didn't know, and again, which has been emphasized by the communications. We need to sit down, the council, Board of Trustees, and we need to do it soon. It's, to me, this is really getting ugly, and I don't wanna see that. We all support and like, I know there's been things said, and, but we want to see that college sort of move forward, because we do, I see the graduation, the graduates that I attended at our graduation ceremony, I felt, I felt very proud. And we need to, let's just, we need to sit down, talk civilly, and get these things out in the open, and start moving ahead.
For once, I agree with Lana. I took a place that, the current president, oh, I did.
President.
President. He's very, very good, and he's on tribal government, and I thought, man, all these tribal council members ought to be over here, and I am a former council member, and I've gotten a chance for myself just to talk to the people instructors, they're really, really good. And then I also sit, I volunteer to sit on the Pawnee Nation Education Committee. And while I'm sitting here, I'm listening to you all, and I'm thinking, that's really interesting, because Ned Williams is the Director of Schools, Carrie Peters and I, we meet when the Education Director calls us, and the first time that we were called together to meet, she gave us the amount of money that we were supposed to disperse to the students, we don't see the names or any of the names of the students or anything, but for the students who are going to the college here. And it was the wrong amount, she received the wrong numbers from the Pawnee Nation Finance Department, so we overpaid, we over, and they loved it, because they, now they receive approximately $1,400 to go to spend. Oh, $1,400, that's nothing. And these children, these students here, who are going to the college, they're, they really had a tough time. You know, a lot of them are single mothers, huge families, no money, can't pay their bills, can't pay their, it's just, it's terrible, it's really sad. Then, the last time we met, they said in our little bylaws, who were passed by the council, we had given them, we had passed them, you know, and they were supposed to be presented to the council, and then they said we have to use the old bylaws. And Ned Williams has been here forever, and he said, oh, I saw them, they're host bats, they were over at the old Room Chief Building. Well, you know, they're gone. So we insisted that she get our new bylaws that we had passed and present them to the council, and in the meantime, we find out, we don't, that they don't even have a, they're not even in a, all of the, every student, they don't have a file folder, they have an envelope. And I said, what? Oh my gosh. Now, this is Pawnee Nation, and I said, every student has a right to come in, I would throw a fit if I came in and wanted to see what was in my file folder, and we don't have a file folder, but they have an envelope. So we asked that they skip file folders, put in, you know, compensation, put in all the, what their grades were, when they're accepted. So it works both ways, you know, and as a former head of the tax, you know, we were able to get the tax commission with the help of the council, you know, we paid them, man, finances have never changed, I'm sorry I told you that, they didn't pay enough, you're gonna end up with white hair, it's been like that for years, you know, and we knew that to pull the monies out in order to operate efficiently, you know, the same with the court system. This is, this is one of the best things that ever happened. And our people, we do all the things, Paul Fuller's wonderful, he wrote that book, A Mojole Horse, he wasn't an administrator, but he had a doctor's degree, so yeah, he ended up going to college. And he was not an administrator, and just been it. You know, it gets tired, we're tired of everything that we can't let me lose, you know, if we're gonna lose the college, then we lose the college again, but we don't want that to happen, and you're gonna hurt so many students, so many future students. And Ned, you know, he's the one who helps to convince those who don't wanna go to college, who wanna end up, and you know, we have a lot of people like that who aren't doing anything right now, a lot of young people who just get in trouble every week, I get the jail report every day. But these kids wanna go to college, they wanna go here, where it's their home, where they're safe, where they know it's not that far to travel, and, you know, I can go on and on, but I see the importance, and I think Pawnee College needs to keep funding and adding more money, because you get a budget, somebody said, in fact, it was Bruce Pratt, told me last year that they, you all didn't have a budget, you couldn't get a budget together. So I know, what is it, he told me that it's $150,000 from TDC. You know, first we started out with $35,000, then it was $50,000. Then they wanted half of all the profits, and Walter Epplepupps said, don't do it, Helen, because no business can operate on, you know, you're taking, you're giving all the profits away, then they want 60%. And so, you know, it goes on, but we're able to, good leadership at TDC, you know, you really think about it, and I hated that this yelling stuff is going on, it's so disrespectful, I just can't stand it, it's just, it's terrible, we shouldn't allow, we have to have a Sergeant of Arms come in, I don't think you all are that way today, but I've heard that, and Mr. Mason... But I've heard that, and Mr. Mason, I always had respect for you. I didn't know you were screaming and hollering. Not necessary. They have good hearing. They're good people, you know. And, I don't know, I'm just kind of disgusted. And I just hope that you all continue to support the college. Give them more money. Got any money?
I don't think there's doubt that we don't ever not support the college. You know, we've always talked about that. I think every one of us here has said that we support the college. And I don't think anybody needs to think that we don't, you know. Because I understand, and I think we all understand, that it helps out our people. You know, I know, I've seen a lot of people, some of my relatives have graduated. From there, gone on to graduate. You know, so no doubt, I want to see this college fail. I think the thing is, is this like we're talking about, it's the communication part. You know, we've got to make sure everything is in place so that it will continue to go on and not fail.
Communication issue with the education. Now, that's just one program. So they're on insurance, same way.
I'd like to make a clarification on one of your statements in regard to the budgets. Since I've been in this position, we've approved the budget the last two times on campus and before the start of the fiscal year. This past year was very transparent. If you'll see the resolution, I identified all the revenues and all the expenditures. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Just give it up, because I've come the next time for costs and kids at school.
Ms. Walker, I know you want to move on, but I just want to give you an economic issue or give you an idea of economics of college. Over the last 10 years, the college has brought in $4.5 million. That's an average of $45,000 a year in that grant. And out of that, students, let's say 300 students over the 10 years, averaging $5,000, I just do them all the scholarships or grants, equals $1.5 million. And then, with the seven employees, let's say the average salary is upward or downward, it's $45,000 a year. That's $315,000 a year. At $315,000 a year, by 10 years, $3.15 million to the street. And then with the indirect cost, at 28% on average, $45,000. I've got $360,000. That's by 10 years. And then the space cost they brought in, averaging $20,000 a year for 10 years, $200,000. Just by rough calculations, say this college, with the lack of accreditation status, brought in $9.7 million in 10 years. Employees, purchasing power, utilities, rent for the staff and students. The 300 students who have attended, there's more than that. I'm just using 300 as a round figure. The evaluations we've received in the last few years from the evaluator, which was a problem also because of the financial discord between policies of the college and that approval of the grant and that of the tribe, has shown that we are doing the job necessary. While the college is earning the little grant that we have, it needs more. It needs equal to that in independent funds. Whether it's through the tribe or a millionaire benefactor, giving us $500,000 to set aside, the bank, not to use it, but the bank to grow. That's the economic initiative that this college has brought. Regardless of me or the other administrators before me or behind me, that's what this college is going to do for many people and this local community. It needs to have its independent status. It cannot operate as a college with tribal dictation of policies and procedures. Plain and simple. HLC, Higher Learning Commission, has made that statement. It will make that statement. Now, maybe we don't have all the infrastructure in place currently, but we'll never have it if we don't start it sometime. And that's all I can tell you, that I'm trying to do that. And with your vote, no confidence in me, but the BOP is the one who has the confidence. The students, they're here. I'm going to forward it. I come standing for you all as a man who's doing the job that he thinks is the right way to do it. Because my board of trustees, I said I'm doing okay. I appreciate you all listening to me. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take that as your final statement. And, Council, I'm going to close up this portion of the meeting. And I want to take about a 10-minute break here. Director Report. Your, Andrew Nierke.
Got an easy, easy report, I guess, considering, all that's considering. You know, dealing with some stuff, obviously with earthquake. We're still working on that. You know, we had a stone mason out yesterday, a master mason, to look at the building facades and the actual structure of the building. Because we've got to integrate that into our price for the rehab. Right now, tentatively, I've been in communication with Mr. Hinson of Gooch's. And it looks like we're going to be around the $170,000 mark just for the interior of the buildings, and that's all buildings to replace the master. About 170, but anywhere between 170 and 100,000. But that does not include any of the outside masonry work that'll need to be done. I haven't got his report, because Mr. Hinson's been up in North Dakota. I'm going to be with him tomorrow, hopefully. Roger came up and talked to him and said he's going to be with me tomorrow. Or just let Mike know that I needed to be able to talk about that. When we get all the prices figured, the construction schedule figured, then we'll, you know, submit all that stuff to the local emergency management along with the City of Pawnee and file the claim under insurance. Good news, though, with the buildings, we did do an air quality study. We were concerned after we found lead particles in the air filter system. So then, I was doubly concerned when Mr. Hinson came to me and said, boy, you know, these old plaster buildings, they're dead asbestos in the plaster and heat fires from spreading from room to room. And so, you know, that, we still get aftershocks. And some mornings we come in and there's a light layer of dust coming from the vents and plaster back on the ground. So we contracted with an industrial hygienist to come out and do an air quality study. And the results came back today. Great. We are below the all permissible levels of exposure for lead and asbestos, which means that we can't occupy the buildings. We go ahead and continue with our removal of IT to a new space only because we've had collapse in their ceiling above them during these aftershocks. And, you know, we don't want to take a risk that it's just going to continue to spread. Because it's all plaster above us with that big plank above us. And that ceiling that you see in IT is just a false ceiling. And the real ceiling is right above it. So we moved them out. And that, we need to do that anyway, because plus the rehab starts on the buildings. It's easier to do construction when, you know, when everybody's got a different space. But I will know the more details when I meet with Mr. Hinson on the construction side of things and we file the report to solve an insurance and file our claim. I did talk with, can't remember who it was now. I think it was Mr. Hinson. It may have been the insurance adjuster who stated to us that Zero Micro Riders, the guys that provide the insurance, have put a priority on the Pawnee Nation. So that means that we're looking to be fully funded and reverse for the damage. They want to see us made whole. And that's because it's a national story and all that kind of stuff. They want to see us made whole. So that's good news for us, which means that we can, you know, rehab these buildings into a condition, you know, if not even better than what they were before the earthquake. But, you know, the plaster is just, it's just coming down slowly and it's cracking everywhere. Every time we have an earthquake, you know, it's more plaster, the cracks get bigger. But that's just going to, that's going to stay the same. I mean, it's not going to change until, you know, earthquakes stop. Which I don't know what that's going to be. So I don't know if we, when we met last time, if I recorded on the joint town hall with the City of Pawnee. It went really well. I was very proud of the staff that helped put that together. And I thought it was very informative. You know, I kind of wish there were a little bit more tribal citizen representation there. You know, it is what it is. At least on video, we can get it out to the folks. We are just continuing to prepare for our next move with respect to the oil and gas and the fracking moratorium that the council passed in resolution, and I think it was October 22, 2015. Other than that, between all the environmental stuff that I've been dealing with and the earthquakes, still continuing with policy development. We are done with the travel document. I need to forward that document to council so you guys can review it and look at it. And I will do that tomorrow. I will forward that document. In my mind, it's a complete document. Muriel is working along with procurement and myself to upgrade our policies, our procurement policies to the new standard. I guess we've learned that they're going to go off the O and B, right?
Super circular.
Super circular. That's right, for fiscal standards. So we have to update our policies to bring it in mind that. I mean, we don't have to, but it's just, it may seem easier if our policy reflects what the federal programs require. Then we don't have those communication errors in there. So policy development is still ongoing. And I think that's about it. I mean, I haven't traveled anywhere. Haven't done anything really, except for just work on earthquakes, earthquake preparedness. We're getting ready to do earthquake drills. I've worked with the CAS, the DDCS, and Emergency Management to come, get together a comprehensive earthquake drill like I used to have when I was a kid. And pretty soon, we'll be implementing that. And they will be, we went through the buildings, each building, each division, and we kind of gave an education on what to do during an earthquake. Now it's time to drill. And put that in as long as, along with our current, you know, fire drills and our tornado drills, and just make that a regular routine part of life here in Pawnee, which is kind of sad. But we need to do it. We need to get our folks prepared to know what they're doing in a chance of an earthquake. We are also, I'm going to be tired. But we are continuously looking at ways to improve our staff and employee positions here by getting them the training they need to upgrade themselves in life. Because what we want to do is we want to have a built-in conveyor belt for good quality people that can move up and up and up. And that will move up and up and up within the tribal government. Because that institutional memory is so important to tribal government. We are fortunate that we have a lot of institutional memory on staff. And I don't want to see that go because we're not doing what we need to do to prepare our younger staff or our other employees and to prepare them for positions of leadership. We started with the Leadership Development Course, the Pawnee Nation Leadership Development Course, with the project coordinators and managers. So everybody at the initial supervisory level, they went through a conference of eight-hour class about leadership, and that's our 100-level class. We're doing another, it's a 200-level class. And then we're going to break it up into probably a 300 or 400-level class for just project managers and coordinators. We're doing the same thing in December for division directors. We're going to have a division director kind of education, crash course, leadership, and kind of issues that we see on a daily basis that directly affect division directors. And that's going to be a leadership class that's going to be a 100-level class. And eventually, what we'd like to do is take these classes we're doing and integrate them into our orientation. So that you can hire them as a manager and supervisor. You take that 100-level introductory course right away. So you know what the expectations are in tribal government. So that's what we've been working on here in Pawnee. So any questions?
I had a little bit. I don't want to, I know we're all ready to get home. But I just want to go over about the IT's old rooms, talk about the ceiling. What does that, how does that affect the offices that are above?
It's, what it is, is they have a wood floor that's joined into the walls, okay? And it's the ceiling that's basically attached by lattice that's below the wood.
Okay, okay.
And it's just plaster, you know, on that lattice work.
But the original, the frame or?
The floor is stable. We're not losing parts of the floor. We're just, it's the plaster. And they're big pieces. I mean, we lost a piece that was probably about, you know, a foot around, two foot around, if that hit somebody ahead, and it would hurt.
So we're just going to kind of, can do that.
And so we get rehab.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. MacTure?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you for doing all the work. Okay, next on our agenda is the General Report.
Getting the Council. I think you have my report. It was emailed to each of you earlier today. I stand beside the report. Please note that I did attach a copy of the complaint. It was filed in a federal court. The federal court currently believes it takes files we speak. It will be technically, legally, officially filed tomorrow. They have to respile it. They probably have some hearings. I suspect it will probably be referred to mediation, maybe arbitration. But these things always take time, because you have to notice everybody. And it's going to be a little bit of room, but that's okay. And what else? Oh, FYI. Notice the Billy Hedges letter I received. I thought it was around her costume. Because I wrote respectful and nice letter, and she wrote that back. Well, I was just asking a question. She said, no, we could not get any money back on the note in front of the tickets. I know I'm looking at that note about it, but I think I'll go ahead and write a letter to the airline and see what they have to say. So other than that, and the contents of my report there stands. If anybody has any questions, feel free.
I do. Did we, did we ask you to follow him up?
I think first I practiced it, so I went ahead and did it. Like I said, I don't know. I may be looking at that note about it. Yeah. He asked me to write a letter to see if the Council did.
That we asked them to.
Okay.
I didn't recall. I didn't, I didn't see the letter that you sent out to them. So can you send that to us so we can see what you wrote?
So you might have known.
Oh, it is. No, I don't think it's, it is a letter.
All right. I'll email a copy of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I tried to be careful about it, but I'm respectful and all. And then I received that in return. But I'm not going to give that, I'm going to go ahead and write a letter to the airline and see what they have to say. I may be looking at that note about it to see what they have to say.
Is that all? Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Mason. Okay, moving on to new business. Item one, item under, under item 12, number one. Approval of Resolution Number 16-112. This is a TDC appointment, 16-2. I believe in your candidates, our resumes, people who want to be part of the TDC, the commission.
Board.
A board.
Yes. Are we just up for two? Are we just going to have up for two?
Yes, both for two, I guess. Maybe it's passing. What page is that on as far as the applicants?
42.
42. So we hit two? Yes. How many applicants?
Two seats, two, five, and two applicants. Five applicants.
Two seats.
Two positions. Yes.
And Council, write down two names.
On the same, on the same paper?
Yes, same paper.
What are the names?
They are Andrea Bowman, Misty Nuttall, Linda Justice, Lily Cummins-Bratt, and Lester Sunnigle. Select two.
The applicant is Lester and Linda. Are currently seated.
We have one vote for Linda Justice and one vote for Lester Sunnigle. We have one vote for Misty Nuttall and one vote for Andrea Bowman. We have one vote for Andrea Bowman and one vote for Misty Nuttall. We have one vote for Misty Nuttall. We have one vote for Andrea Bowman. We have one vote for Misty Nuttall. We have one vote for Linda Justice. We have one vote for Linda Justice and we have one vote for Lester Sunnigle. We have one vote for Linda Justice and we have one vote for Lester Sunnigle. So that, we have four votes for Linda Justice, three votes for Lester Sunnigle, four votes for Misty Nuttall, and three votes for Andrea Bowman.
To talk to applicants are Linda Justice and Misty Nuttall.
Do you have to entertain a motion?
Not yet.
To appoint...
Okay, entertain a motion to appoint Linda Justice and Misty Nuttall.
Who do you have to do a motion to?
At my time.
Your first one? Approval Resolution for Seat Number Two. Where's going to go down to my?
Okay.
Resolution 1612. You need to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Linda Justice, reappoint Linda Justice to Seat Number Two.
Motion's been made. Your second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made. Seconded. Appoint Linda Justice. Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes, Angela Thompson.
I'm voting no because I believe there's a conflict of interest in regard to TDC and the terror that Linda currently serves on. So I have to go with the way I feel because of that conflict. So I don't know.
Sammy Anderson?
No.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spotters, Chief?
Question. Can we put something in place to help prevent that?
It would have...
If you guys, when you pass her a handbook and it says in there that you guys will determine whether it's a conflict of interest to appoint someone to boards that conflict with each other. So you guys will have to make that decision and whether to put her in there or not.
Well, I say it's definitely a conflict of interest. She sits, she has her hands in many places. And as she is also Commissioner for the terror. And she's also now on TDC. And there's a lot of conflict.
I would like to change my vote. Do I know? Because of those reasons?
I would have no problems with putting her on there. She wasn't on the terror board. But I, you know, I didn't...
Yes, they make their own decision. She can resign from one or?
No, she's already on one and she's applied, so the answer is in his favor.
Okay.
I have to say nothing.
So motion in care?
Motion, uh...
Leanna has a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Leanna.
Okay, I stopped at Adrian's vote for Leanna. Jesus.
Yes.
No.
Okay. Okay. Her position to be on the TDC board has been denied. So...
So do we vote against her that position between the other?
We're going to have to. There was a time between Lester and Andrea.
So we just vote between Lester and Andrea this round or two?
You know, myself, I just want to say a little something. You know, I think that, I think we have good reason, you know, that's about being a conflict of interest. But I feel like we shouldn't have led it that this far. I feel like we should have addressed this before we ever come to this point to vote in. And, you know, granted, you know, it might be on my, should have been on me or whatever to have said something earlier. But I just, yeah, I mean, we recognize these things. We see these things. And I think that, you know, we should maybe compare our data and say, hey, you know, there's a conflict of interest here. Let's give them an opportunity to, you know, or whatever, you know. But we're here. She had to have known. So now what we doing?
I have a question before we go into this. Was that handbook sent out to all of you? Or is it, okay.
So that's...
So we re-vote on the...
Between Andrea and Lester.
Before we vote, I think I have to bring out this next conflict. Mr. Sunnigle is the owner in the land that we lease from him. So to me, that's, yeah. So to me, that's a conflict as well. And for me, it's a conflict. I know he's been on that for quite some time, but for me, it's a conflict.
And what matters that you're saying, if you hear this?
But he says that, or he does not vote on things dealing. I'm not sure exactly what, what it is, but there's some things he does not vote on. They were, I'm not sure exactly, but...
You're a cages itself?
Yeah.
Why don't you throw that out there?
They have a little bit of...
Okay, inspire, inspire here.
I have some. You need some?
I'm going to use it for something. There's only one name you can go on.
One name.
Well, I'm done. I'm going to go out. Sorry.
Okay, here we go.
The smallest.
Between Lester and Andrea.
Okay, we have one vote for Andrea. We have another 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 vote for Andrea. We have one vote for Lester. And we have another vote for Lester.
Okay, Andrea Bowman has won this seat number two. Make a motion to, someone make a motion to vote with this.
Appoint.
Appoint.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 16112, appointing Andrea Bowman to the TDC Appointment Seat Number Two. I sign that.
Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes, Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spotters, Chief?
Yes.
Leanna Peter?
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved and moving on to the other. Number 16-113, TDC Appointment Seat Number Five. Again, vote one on Misty Nuttall. Then, oh.
No.
She's out there. Lily Cummins-Bratt?
No, we already voted on it.
We already voted.
Who was that?
Misty had four votes. We're trying to appoint Linda and... The motion to prepare is... So we either... Yes.
Okay, someone needs to make a vote for Misty Nuttall. Seat Number Five.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 16-113, Appointment of TDC Seat Number Five, Appoint Misty Nuttall.
Motion's been made. Your point by Misty Nuttall. Sorry, your second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made. Your point, Misty Nuttall, and seconded. Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes, Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Leanna Peter?
Yes.
Adrian Spotters, Chief?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
No.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
The appointment of Misty Nuttall has passed. She's now on Seat Number Five of the TDC. Moving on to the Housing Commissioner, Seat Number Four, Number 16-114. Best One Position.
How many can they sit on, two?
And Miss...
Two.
As long as there's no conflict?
Yeah.
As long as there's no conflict for users.
Okay, on... One position, Seat Number Four, Pawnee Tribal Housing Committee, we have...
They're there. Sorry.
Andrea Bowman, Misty Nuttall, Lily Cummins-Bratt, Jim Thompson, Ramona Horse Chief. Need one...
Okay, we have one vote for Ramona Horse Chief. We have one vote, Misty Nuttall. We have one vote, Jim Thompson. We have one vote, Jim Thompson. We have one vote, Ramona Horse Chief. We have one vote, Misty Nuttall. And we have one vote, Jim Thompson.
Jim Thompson has to go. More votes need to approve his appointment.
Does Daryl usually, does the president usually vote in these appointments on permission?
So you had to give him a vote on the resolution.
Unless it's a conflict.
Yeah, unless it's a conflict.
I'm the past tense, the president always voted on things.
Yes, yes.
Just on the resolution.
Just on the, yeah. Trying to look it. Yeah. Trying to be easy from going along.
Here we need to make a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Thompson, seat number four.
I might call a motion to appoint. He sits on Tero two?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and he's an effective. Stand.
So is there a conflict if he sits on housing and Tero?
I would think so. I would think so because Linda doesn't support Tero on housing. She doesn't have to.
That is a direct conflict.
Yeah, it's a direct conflict.
Do you know what incidents, and I don't know, it's, uh... Not a reflection, I don't think of anybody specifically on the board. It's just the fact that there was a project that was going on that Tero should have been involved in, but they weren't involved. It was a housing project, and Tero should have been involved in it, they weren't, they didn't even know about it.
They're duplexes.
Yeah.
So, to me, that's a concern.
A concern.
Yes. I didn't know he was on Tero, I didn't know, I didn't know he was on Tero.
I mean, ineffective because it's not supported, you know, that, that's what I mean.
And I'm not saying that, you know, you want to get something saying that, you know, there's, she should have been involved in that project.
Yeah, that's right.
Should we have an opinion?
Say again?
I said, should we have a legal opinion on whether that's a conflict? Or should we decide it by ourselves?
We decided earlier.
Yeah. I mean, the same, whatever did the same conflict.
I think we already voted, uh, this is something that should have been brought up prior to our vote. I didn't know he was with Tero.
It should have been brought up at the interviews, really. To make them aware so they could resign from one or the other.
Well, it shouldn't have been accepted in there as well, but we don't discuss it until we're here at this, on this table, you know? I don't know, I...
It was, it was just you and I, wasn't it?
What?
It was just you and I at interview.
And Daryl.
And Daryl.
Yes, so maybe we ought to give them both the option. I guess we aren't giving the other one.
I've already heard, so we should just vote.
We already voted.
We should just vote.
We already voted.
We already voted.
Let's just go ahead and take the vote.
See where we are.
Yes. Motion been made to appoint Thompson?
No. I started it. I make a motion.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Benjamin Wilson, yes, Angela Thompson?
No, because of the conflict.
Sammy Addison?
No.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swatohorshich?
No.
Leanna Peter?
Yes.
It's going to be the Misty Ramona.
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson has not been approved.
But aren't these seats, uh, doesn't the president appoint these seats, and you guys just wear week? Approved up?
Just for the minutes?
It's a good question, huh?
Yes. Boards and commissions will take applications.
Okay, Mr. Thompson has not been approved, so we, uh, have, uh, between our Ramona Horshich and Misty.
My special welcome. Maybe we should ask if there's any conflicts before we go to this next gaming commission.
Before we go, before we get started. Anybody, anybody? Okay, we have one vote for Ramona Horshich. We have one vote for Ramona Horshich. We have one vote for Ramona Horshich. We have one vote for Misty Nettle. We have one vote for Ramona Horshich. We have one vote for Ramona Horshich. And we have one vote for Misty Nettle. If I vote Ramona Horshich, can you vote Misty Nettle?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution number sixteen one fourteen, uh, for six more for housing mission, appointing Ramona Horshich.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Call for a vote.
Benjamin Wilson, yes, Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swatohorshich?
Yes.
Leanna Peter?
Yes.
Okay, the appointment of Ramona Horshich has been approved for Housing Commissioner's seat number four. Moving on to the Gaming Commission appointment, number sixteen dash one fifteen.
Would you like to speak on something? Do you have any concerns?
No, very good.
Thank you.
Sorry, who is that?
Blade, Blade McClendon. Blade McClendon.
Blade.
Joanne Roberts' name. Not Joanne Roberts, Joanne, uh, Rankin. Carla Nacti. Her mother, her mother Joanne has a twin sister that's her son.
I've seen him around before, but it sounded like he had the interest in what was going on.
Two positions. And, uh... Those who are, are asking for his positions are James Rice, Alex Horshich, Crystal Winholtz, and Lyle Fields. Select two.
Is there anyone in here that has a conflict?
Ellis is on Tero.
Right, Ellis is on Tero.
And he's the only one left to point to another commission. Now, uh, and Lyle works for taxes, he works for taxes, he also staffs support for liquor control.
For what?
Liquor control commission. So this is maybe, you don't, I mean, that, that... He didn't make a decision. No.
No, he just...
But...
Turns out they're jealous.
He just what? He's their manager.
He's their, he's their, he's just, he's their, he makes sure they have the agendas and the...
Okay.
Sign machines.
All right.
So, all these people are good, and I...
I can say in the interview, the two incumbents, I don't know what other word to use for it, but they were so knowledgeable about everything that, um...
I agree.
It was a little obvious. And the two that are currently on there that are in the front, James Rice and Crystal Winholtz.
Gaming? Gaming commission to, to appoint us? We have, uh, one vote, James Rice, one vote, Alex Horshich. We have one vote, James Rice, one vote, Crystal Winholtz. We have one vote, James Rice, one vote, Lyle Fields. We have one vote, James Rice, one vote, Crystal Winholtz. We have one vote, James Rice, one vote, Lyle Fields. We have one vote, James Rice, one vote, Lyle Fields. We have one vote, James Rice, one vote, Crystal Winholtz.
Oh, my gosh, we got a tie yet.
We got a tie. We have a tie from Lyle and then Crystal.
James Rice, have James Rice?
Sir.
Here we have, uh, James Rice was the, uh... I heard that most votes were approved for the Gaming Mission, number sixteen dash one fifteen.
I make a motion to approve Resolution sixteen one fifteen, appointing James Rice to Gaming Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made by Angela, seconded by Adrian. Call for a vote.
Benjamin Wilson, yes, Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swatohorshich?
Yes.
Leanna Peter?
Yes.
James Rice has been appointed to the Gaming Commission, number sixteen dash one one five. Call for another vote. That'll be, uh, between, uh, Crystal Winholtz and Lyle Fields.
Okay, we're going to tiebreaker, Crystal and Rice. One vote for Crystal. One vote for Lyle. One vote for Lyle. One vote for Lyle. One vote for Lyle. One vote for Crystal. And one vote for Crystal. We have three votes for Crystal, four votes for Lyle.
What did you say that he said on?
Oh, he's just staff support.
Staff support.
For liquor control.
For liquor control and tax commission.
He doesn't have any voting on the tax, on any vote.
Staff support, he's just staff support.
He's just on his sports commission.
Oh, well, he is on his sports commission, sorry, yes, he's on his sports commission.
So if he's on the tax commission, sports commission, now the...
No, he's not on the tax commission, he's just a staff.
Oh, a staff, okay, okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, Mr. Lyle Fields has been, uh... I make the motion, Resolution sixteen one sixteen, to appoint Lyle Fields to the Gaming Commission. to appoint Lyle Fields to the gaming commission.
I second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
Then Mr. Lyle Fields has been appointed to the gaming commission number sixteen dash one one six. Moving on to...
I make a motion to approve sixteen one seventeen, to appoint Zachary Rice to Sergeant at Arms.
Second. Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, to appoint Zachary Rice as Sergeant at Arms.
This is on election commission.
Election commission, yes.
Call for a vote.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Amy Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, Zachary Rice has been appointed to the election commission as Sergeant at Arms. Maybe not to number sixteen dash one eighteen.
I make a motion that we approve sixteen one eighteen, to appoint Cynthia Butler to open it.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler has been made, has been appointed to the election commission alter, number sixteen dash one one eight. Moving on to... Subsection eight, approve of mine nation twenty seventeen holiday schedule.
I make a motion to approve the party nation twenty seventeen holiday schedule. Pause second.
Angela Thompson made the motion, and Sammy Anderson, seconded, to approve the holiday schedule. Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
To the twenty seventeen holiday schedule has been approved.
I have a question. Uh, this is for Andrew, I'm not trying to jump over here. Not with this stuff, but is there a reason why these two gentlemen are here?
Uh, it's just for Sabrina wants to be here.
Okay, I didn't, I just wanted to ask, because I'm going to leave the show me, right?
Yeah.
And so I was just thinking, you know, let's get you laid, you know?
Don't worry, Adrian, I'd love to take care of you. We were wondering, yeah, they're all... Guys, just hear from the front of that, or where?
Just want to see how we get down.
That's right. I told him they could go home, but I told him that.
We're probably better than what you can watch on TV, so...
Carrie has to be here.
You don't have to present, I think we, I mean, you know what I mean? I'm ready to make a motion to approve Resolution sixteen one nineteen, new members. Sorry, it's taken so long.
I appreciate you being here.
Right.
I'll second it, because if we have questions, then, you know, you would be here, so I appreciate you being here, and I'm glad it's important that you are here. Sorry you have to be here. But you're probably not, I'm not, sorry.
I'm glad you're here. Sorry, but I'm not sorry.
Let's get to it. Well, at least you get firsthand to see what goes on, what we discuss, versus the other people we have.
Okay, so motion's been made for, motion's been made for new members.
Well, I would kind of like, we have to pull them out, you know, we got, it's ten new members, you know, at least, because on here, it doesn't say on the agenda, you know, where she could present it, you know, there's ten new members that applied for membership. Maybe she could throw it in for some, in a long way, we're in a hurry here, but...
Anyway, motion's been made.
I'll second. Leanne, we're...
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
I'd like to see that, just the letter members, if possible. I have a person that wanted to know if their child, they were, and I said, I would know. Whenever, before you...
It's a reservation, it's not a resolution.
I didn't, I didn't.
The name's wrong, it's the last word has...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Take out for approval for deceased members, number sixteen dash one one two.
Summer? I'll second.
Motion's been made.
Which one?
And seconded.
Who's second?
Number sixteen dash one two six.
They said it at the same time, John Martin down as a second.
Adrian?
Adrian.
Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
Okay, approval of deceased members, number sixteen dash one one eight, has been approved. Moving on to Resolution number sixteen dash one twenty-one, conditional relinquishment.
I make a motion to approve sixteen one twenty-one.
I'll second.
You'll be, okay.
Okay, call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution number sixteen dash one twenty-one has been approved. Moving on to Resolution number sixteen dash one two two, conditional relinquishment.
I make a motion to approve Resolution sixteen one twenty. I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
Number sixteen dash one two two has been approved. Moving on to Resolution number sixteen dash one two three, conditional relinquishment.
Make the motion to approve Resolution sixteen one twenty-three.
I second.
Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
Resolution number sixteen dash one two three has been approved. Moving on to Resolution number sixteen dash one two four, job placement.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you. Thank you, Carrie.
Well, I can speak about it, but what it is, is, uh, there's $250,000 left in, I guess, the treasury at the government, so with the 477, they're allowing, I think there's sixty-four, sixty-eight tribes competing for it. They'll pick about eighteen of them to get additional $25,000. And it's just going to be, what we'll do is just write a proposal to them. If we're selected, we'll just get additional $25,000 to our job placement training. So that's pretty much all it is.
I make a motion to approve Resolution sixteen one twenty-four, with an amendment, amendment to it, and the now therefore be it resolved, it says $25,000, it should be $25,000.
I'll second.
Well, it is.
I said, yes.
I'll second. Uh, this is one time, not twice.
Yes, one time.
Are they going to make a decision this year?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, it's going to apply to about end of, for mid-December, because it's going to go into the, uh, 2017, uh, but, so they'll let us know before the end of the year. It's actually due, I believe, on the fifth, so that's why we're wanting to go ahead and do it now, so we can send it in by the fifth, and then we'll know by the end of mid-December.
Seconded. Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
Yes.
Amy, did you say Adrian's seconded?
I didn't.
Oh, Don, I had to write it down. Donna's seconded, right under Angela's head. Oh, I thought, I thought it was me.
Oh, okay. Don't bother me.
So you went with the darn, you went with the nature.
You did that, don't...
All right, rock, paper, scissors.
Five and out.
One time.
I can, I can see.
One time. One shot, ready?
Hey.
Adrian's got it.
Resolution number sixteen dash one two four has been approved. And moving on to budget committee recommendations.
Do you have a count for the vote? She's saying we didn't vote, I thought we voted.
We voted.
You voted, yeah.
We voted, I just wanted to make that clear.
Oh, we asked through the... Okay, budget committee recommendations, fifteen A. I sent these all to you early on, it's Pawnee Business Council mod number eleven. This is moving money, um, from additional dollars from the tax commission tribal budget to pay for, um, the...
401K.
401, yeah, the 401K. If you recall, that we, when we get paid in 401K for a certain amount of employees for several years, thirteen, fourteen, I believe, uh, that part of the... For some reason, there was an issue and they weren't paid. So this amount of $3,088 is, since we didn't pay into the 401K, they lost dollars because it wasn't, there was no money. We had, yeah. Yes, so this is for errors and omissions. Uh, we, we do have an errors and omissions insurance policy. We, we, we've got to pay this before December fifth, or it's going to tackle more interest. So we're going to go ahead and pay it, we're going to simultaneously file a claim for errors and omission, and hopefully recoup some of that $3,088, $88. So that's why we're putting in fines and penalties of the Pawnee Business Council budget to pay that. And the $7,604, did you already include that for the elders?
Uh, the elders included, I don't know.
Okay, the elders for the fifteen gift cards, this is included in that, um, in the budget mod, if we approve it in C, okay? So the total amount coming from the tax budget is $10,692, and there is money there to transfer, so this is moving the money.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I don't appreciate why.
Motion's been made. Angela, seconded.
Second. I make a motion. Angela, seconded.
Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Leanne Keeter?
Yes.
Okay, Budget Committee recommendations has been approved.
Uh, it would be the PBC mod number eleven, it was approved, and then we're going to the next topic, number item two, yeah. So item B is tax commission budget mod number two. This is reducing the tax budget to where we just transferred it to PBC in the amount of $10,692. I make that motion. I'll second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Call for a vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson, yes. Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swarthorst?
Yes.
Yes.
The final item C, um, is the gift cards for the elders for Thanksgiving. Um, Budget Committee recommends appropriating $6,000, um, which is included in the last mod, to cover this expense to send the $15 gift cards out to all of the elders. I believe it was 65 in total, like we did last year. Um, based on the Budget Committee's recommendation, I make that motion, I second.
I have a question, this, this, uh, um, is this elders in our jurisdiction, or does it go further?
All elders, on our row.
Is that right, all on row?
Last year, there was 371. We don't know the anticipation, whether those will go up if they turn over 65, or, you know.
You're fine.
It may go up, so that's why, last year it cost about $55,000. This year, we recommend appropriation of $6,000 to cover any of those increases.
65 in number?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Motion's been made, it's seconded.
Okay, the motion.
I made the motion.
And you seconded?
I did.
And Don, you seconded?
Call for a vote.
Damien Wilson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Swatow?
Yes.
Leanne Keater?
Yes.
Yes.
Item C, fifteen C, has been approved. Anything else, Adam?
Good job, treasure. Yeah, very good job.
Now to, um, open forum now. If I have, yeah, thing to say.
Just real briefly, um, let's not lose sight of meeting with, um, the college board. We really need to get that one in place, um, so we can just squash it and get on the right, on the same, uh, page anymore.
And just real quick, I'm gonna email you all in regard for discussion on the, uh, dinner for the elders. And so we can, I don't want to discuss it now, we'll discuss it via email, because I didn't wanna do. Okay, yeah, and I would like to give you that.
I just want to invite everybody Sunday to, uh, the roundhouse. We're having our, um, Sakti Vidhu, our young dolphins ceremony. So, uh, we will start right at noon, and we will continue, go eat at noon, and then we'll continue on with our ceremony after that, you know. So it's one of the last few ceremonies that we've had that our ancestors brought from down here, so we're still trying to carry it on, so letting all down, because they're all invited.
Thank you.
And don't forget about the Hand Game, the cultural resource is sponsoring.
What's that?
Uh, we...
Twenty-seven?
Nobody's sponsoring it, of course, I know they're just sponsoring it.
And I'd like to go next one for, uh, always, because, uh, you know, you can apply.
Like turkey.
Thirties.
Yeah.
But when is that, Jim, that's...
They said, they threw out like the fourteenth or the twenty-fourth and the twenty-first of December.
Oh, December?
Yes.
Oh, okay, this is like next week or something.
No, 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 no.
I was like, oh, now. Okay, but my...
Since there's no executive section, we want to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Motion's been made.
Yes.
And seconded. Okay, listen, hi.
Hi. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming.